...
My flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I don't see... Was Dave gonna come here and talk?
I don't know if Dave was gonna make it. The other guy said that he would.
Okay, well, just let Kyle come up first, brief us up on the faith drive.
Do you want lights or no lights?
Uh, yeah, we should probably turn the lights on if people are coming in. I mean, I prefer the dark.
I prefer it this way.
You gotta be more inviting.
Yeah, I know.
Even it's Monday morning.
I know, right? We have to ease into it.
Yeah. The floor is yours.
All right.
You wanna update us on where we're at?
I went out on Thursday, did a courtesy inspection of thirteen.
Faith drive.
All other inspections, with the exception of the highway department, were done. He was gonna be calling highway on Friday, which he did, which highway department signed off. So everybody signed off. The issue came into how he built the building and what his intention was. What we've got him doing now is he was, he... He had submitted at the, at the board's request, he had submitted amended application, which I rejected. I talked to him about it and I talked to him about the reasons that we rejected the application. He understood why we rejected it. Not a big deal. We're going to be granting, assuming that he took care of the things that were needed to be done on Thursday and got the inspection that you did on Friday, we're going to be re-inspecting today, and if everything is compliant, basically life safety is compliant, we're gonna be granting a temporary C of O. So that now he'll be in compliance with town laws.
I was just gonna say, I'm sorry, I missed this, what property we're talking about.
The faith drive.
Thank you.
Yes.
And, and I guess, just so, the reason that amended application was rejected, because obviously his intention was to do an A D U, but the square footage of the A D U exceeds what he's allowed based off of the square footage of the remainder of the house, so...
Correct.
He's going to be, you're having him, that section is gonna have to be, is that gonna be?
So, so right now, that, so right now, he has the section, and I'm not sure how familiar you are with it, I do have a copy of the plan, but the house is in hell shape. This side faces the street, this side goes away from the street, behind the garage. So this side is, is the section that is, I'm gonna say finished, it's not finished, but it's finished enough for occupancy, or presumably will be when I go back in today, on a temporary certificate of occupancy. The things that he's missing right now is that this part of it, which is behind the garage, is framing weather title. So he doesn't have the mechanicals in, he hasn't actually finished the framing. He's got some additional work that he's doing, stairs aren't in, things like that. So he's got some of those things that he's working on right now. What I talked to him about specifically, and I talked with the fire department about this, because there's sprinkler system in the building. So where the back section is not yet conditioned, they can't incorporate sprinkler system. Sprinkler system is only required for living space, so they cut and capped it off, so that it's not going to the back. He's going to have to seal off, excuse me, he's gonna have to seal off the space, both in the basement and in the first floor, which is a single, single-story garage. So basements and main living floor, so that he comes into compliance with the energy code. We're gonna give him a conditional, and I'm gonna talk to him today about what the duration of time is that he thinks it will take to complete the back of the house. Because our conditional will be based on the fact that he's not needing energy. We can go potentially up to the end of August, early September. After that, we start impacting the reason for the energy code. And so what I've talked to him about is that if it's not complete by that amount of time, then we're gonna have to rescind the temporary C of O. He's already stated that he didn't think it would be a problem at all, he wanted to get it done before that happened. In order for us to give him a conditional C of O, we have to close the permit, which means now he's gonna have to come in and reapply for effectively an addition on something that he, he did already pay for. I told him, we can go down this road, and we cannot issue a T C O. But I can't issue a, a certificate of occupancy on half a building that doesn't have clearly defined stop. Right? So he understood that. If he wants his certificate of occupancy, it's gonna cost him the addition of going in for another permit. That's not, that's not a town decision, that's an indecision. So that's not something that the town should necessarily do anything about. Okay? He wants to reapply. Other than that, it's gonna be considered exactly the condition it's in right now, which is unfinished space. He's not allowed to do any additional work in there because he's not gonna have a permit. He's gonna have to get all of his new mechanical permits, all of his new life safety, right down the line. We're gonna have to go in and do inspections. Obviously, the condition of the core and shell will be documented when I go in to do this, kinda draw the line, this is what was the condition.
And down the road, if he wants to apply for an new permit for that addition and making an A D U, he could meet the square footage requirements if he did stuff like finishing the basement.
Correct.
Um, and stuff like that, so he could, within that footprint that's there, he could eventually meet it, but he has, it sounds like Kyle's laid out the steps for him, that you can attain this, but here are the proper steps in the way that you have to do it.
So it's, I mean, this is all, it all sounds wonderful, and probably pencils out on paper, but I think we know that the follow-up is gonna be critical on the town's part to make sure.
The follow-up by me is where it's gonna matter, and the documenting, documenting the current condition and, and ensuring that we have, whatever the date is for the temporary occupancy.
Yeah, I think, I think having a temporary is gonna be the key, having, having an expiration.
Correct.
So that would be.
And, and documenting.
Back down.
And documenting him, in a letter to him.
Right.
That the temporary occupancy is conditioned on getting full occupancy, and at the end of this date, if you don't have, if you don't meet the requirements for full occupancy, then occupancy will be revoked, and whoever is in place will be displaced. Not our issue, this is what you asked for.
The, the section that, that had, that goes out that way.
Yep, yep.
That's gonna be not part of this initial.
Correct.
Permit. That's the piece that was planned for the A D U part.
Correct. And I don't know that he is gonna do that now or not, but quite honestly, we've talked, I've talked with him in detail about this. He is by right, he can be granted an A D U, not a big deal. He just needs to meet the conditions in order to do that.
If it's, if it's internal, all it needs is the building inspectors.
Okay, that's it. Well, uh, it's not the building inspectors, okay, it needs to meet the town ordinance. Yeah.
Yes.
But that's what, yeah, he doesn't need to go, he doesn't need to go in front of anybody else.
Permission is gained through the building inspector.
Right. But he just needs, he needs to meet the town ordinance. He meets the town ordinance, then he would be granted it, like I said, it's a by right situation. It's not, there's no special anything. Just meet the, meet the rules and you're done.
Yep.
Kyle, you said it should be documented, a letter to him? Is that something that you would draft?
Yeah.
Certified mail, short leash.
It's, it's one of those things, I'm not, I, the conversation I had was very, was very positive and very well received.
Yeah.
I think it's, I think it's a lack of clarity in some, in some points and things like that, and, and an understanding that I look at it as a by right situation. You just need to do A, B, and C. If you meet A, B, and C, then that's the end.
And I have, I have no problem if he hand issues a letter, as long as you just note.
It was issued.
Either an email back to the board on this date and time I served him the following year.
I'd be very careful because it's got a track record. And if he, and if it works well for you, I'm delighted to hear that.
What, so, I understand that that may be the case, but I, I'm, I'm the person who I look at what happens today and tomorrow. If I don't worry about what happened in the past, I make things clear today, and then I, I follow up my way.
And that, and that's exactly what you should do, that's.
Right.
That's it.
So, just on another note, did you, did you find any information on that follow-up for the, that other gentleman with the contractor that was looking for some information on either getting their final inspection?
That was the Seacoast modular homes?
Yes.
For?
Forty Tucker Road. I did. I went by, I looked at it late Friday, seven thirty, Friday evening. They've got some things I need to reach back out to Drew this morning.
But you, you followed up with them, you're.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes. Yeah, I went by and did a site visit. It's not, not hugely significant. I, I need to do some code research.
Can, can I just follow up?
Yeah.
Because it was that individual whose home it is who reached out to me over the weekend or just before the weekend.
Yeah, just before the weekend, I really did.
Asking me to see if I could do some follow-up and check.
Yeah.
Because he thought that his general contractor had reached out to the town.
So.
And, and he thought that perhaps there wasn't the follow-up that he expected.
There prob, there probably was not.
Okay.
Okay. Obviously, you guys know, you guys are the ones who put me on. It was a little bit of a information gathering, figuring out how to get information. So I now have access to the email, I now have access to the voicemail. I have cleared thirty-seven or thirty-nine voicemails, and then they filled right back out, so I gotta.
Okay.
And, and unfortunately, what it is, a lot of it is, it's repeat, you know, the same one, but you still have to go through the process. So we're good.
Okay. And I explained that to him?
Yeah.
That, you know, we were going through a transition and it was probably very unfortunate that he just got caught in that.
And that, that's exactly.
At that time.
Yep. And he's not, I mean, for what it's worth, he's not the only one. We're, we've made a bunch of people unhappy, and we're trying to, we're trying to reverse course on that, so.
So is the homeowner aware of this, or have you, you?
I, I did the inspection at seven thirty on Friday night, so I did not talk to anybody yet. I was on an inspection at seven o'clock this morning, and obviously that.
So you're gonna be following up the general contractor, so.
Yeah.
I'm gonna get back.
Yeah, why return the call?
I'm gonna get back to the homeowner, let him know what's happening.
Yeah. Let him know that was, the biggest thing is there was a couple of things that I need to review. That's all. It's just code issues that I, they may be fine, they may not be, I have to look at the code and see. Struckingly enough, I don't have the seven books memorialized in my head. I wish I did.
Gee.
I know, right?
Why that is?
Especially when they change them every two or three years, I do.
All right, I appreciate the update, and I'll, I'll get back to the homeowner, just let him know things are on track.
Okay.
And I'm sure he's heard it from his G C now anyway, if.
I'm, I'm a hundred percent certain that he's heard from his G C that he knew that I was called by there on Friday, because they had to leave the street for me. And like I said, I just didn't follow up over the weekend.
All right, thank you, thank you.
The only other thing, and I don't know if it's appropriate right now, but for, I know that you guys had a request from Dave for a Dave plumbing, Dave Fields plumbing inspector.
Yes.
For.
For the backup.
A backup, for whatever it's worth. Absolutely, I'm in support of that, because I don't wanna have to be his backup, because I'm not qualified.
Yeah.
Okay? The other thing is I had spoken with Mike Norman.
Yep.
About possibly backing me up. He's infinitely qualified.
Okay.
Having been the inspector, but I do know it needs the boards approval, and if I'm not, if I'm supposed to do it a certain way, just, I know that, I'll submit it in writing if needed.
Is there any chance the backup for Dave Field might be able to make it here this morning?
He said he would, but I.
I, I thought, we thought he might be here this morning?
I will check in with Dave.
Because I mean, even if he comes, even if he comes in later in the meeting.
Yes, we, we know. I'll, I'll find out.
Because we just, I think we need to talk to him before we make any official appointment like that.
Yep. I, for what it's worth, I do know that he's a qualified licensed state of Man, uh, state of New Hampshire, so.
And I just, I know Dave has some planned time off and vacations he plans on doing, so.
And.
Us waiting two weeks could backfire.
Could be.
So if he's able to come here this morning, then.
I'll, I'll find out through Dave.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Insane.
So that addresses that appointment.
That it for me?
Yeah, that's it.
Thanks.
Uh, so the other appointment we had was reference thirteen Wadley Point demolition.
Yeah, I told them about seven forty-five, and they thought they would be here too, so.
Okay, so, I, I mean, obviously, we, we had our attorney review this, this document, and it's been updated with the proper amount for the demo. I have no problem with the board voting to sign it, and then they have to make a determination whether or not they're going to sign it, I suppose. But I just, with, like I said, with us being on the area the week's schedule, I think it'd be appropriate, you know, they just know that they have to secure it with a twenty-five thousand dollar, uh, you know, whether it's a secured bond through somebody else or cash for themselves, so if everyone else feels comfortable with that, I would entertain a motion that the board sign us.
Is that the only change to it, was the dollar amount from forty down to?
Oh, twenty-five.
To twenty-five thousand?
Yeah, and I think I filled in a date of when.
Yeah, there was, there was no other substantive changes in that.
No.
Correct.
I'll look at the, approve the post-bond agreement with the folks at thirteen.
Wadley Point.
Wadley Point, thank you.
Discussion. Discussion, so we'll sign it, if they wanna, if they wanna execute it, they sign it, and at that time, they post the bond?
Correct.
At that time?
Yes.
All right.
As long as that's.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's no one, no, no I am used.
When they come to sign, they have to cover the check.
They post the bond, and order them to post the check.
How would the process?
At the time they execute.
That's correct.
Correct.
Case was. Yep.
All in favor?
I.
Let's see, so, all right, so we'll follow up on the plumbing inspector stuff. Do, do we have any public comment before we start our department meeting? Graham? Bill? Nope, no public comment?
I thought we were gonna fill up that half hour with all this stuff.
I know, I thought so too. Uh, let's see, maybe we'll jump ahead to someone else.
Peter Coffins here, I don't know if you wanna talk about the herbicide thing.
Yeah, are you, are you ready to discuss that, or?
Sure.
Do you have questions, I guess?
I forwarded you the response from, from, I mean, Jim, right, Friday, Friday, I forwarded you this response, giving that to them, do you wanna copy?
Um, sure, if you have a comment.
I, I think that may be.
I guess the real question is, since what you've got here is the advice from the attorney, um, would that should be something that's discussed in a, of a session, it's probably advice, so, uh, I, I will say that the advice that we got makes, maybe, um, kind of irrelevant, since, um, I, I guess I could just back up and, and talk about what we're, what we're talking about here.
That would you help with?
Yes, so, unitile pain to you with a notification of intend to use herbicides in.
And we denied them saying that.
And we denied it. Um, and the, uh, they appealed the administrative, your administrative decision to the Z B A. To the Z B A. And the Z B A determined that you in fact had not made a mistake. We were hoping that they would be able to demonstrate either that they were gonna use less than twenty-five gallons, which is the threshold amount for hazardous materials in the aqua protection zone, or that they qualified under one of the other waivers, such as agricultural. They didn't. And they couldn't determine how many gallons of herbicide would be used, and how do you trouble getting the records from the twenty-eighteen spring. So, uh, the, the board ended up determining that there was no error in the decision, and gave them the option, in this case, to apply a high for a variance, which would be enabled them to, um, apply herbicides with conditions. Should they see that? Dave, uh, I believe, judging from an email I got from Dana this morning, Dana Trustal was doing the evaluation on the hazards to the, to the aqua protection. She's on, on behalf of the town, she's. On behalf of the town at, at Unidog. Um, so, uh, she believes that, uh, they are not going to apply for a variance. They have until, well, they have until the eighth of July to apply for an appeal of the decision of the Z B A. But it, it appears to be that they're gonna, um, and this is from Chris Multrip, the, their, their lead on this project. Is that they're to instruct their contractor to apply less than twenty-five gallons of, um, herbicide to the aqua protection zone portions of the right way. And, uh, that way, they would notify the town again, but with a, with that caveat in there. And that would exempt them from the aqua protection zone ordinance requirements. And you would be able to sign that without, you wouldn't, you'd need an appeal to the, to the Z B A.
And, and I think we, we may need to have a non-public at the end of this, because we got, we got some legal guidance on Friday regarding this, so we may need to, that we got from the New Hampshire Municipal Association Legal Services Council, so, yeah, so.
Right.
Well, I think we may need to have a, we may need to have a discussion about that.
Right, and, and, yeah, the, the, there's also, they, Unidog got an advice from their attorney, and they've decided that that, not to appeal for that.
Yeah.
Big exemption, so that.
Okay.
That's why I was saying it might not be relevant in this case.
Yeah, okay, so, so their intention.
Especially if.
Their, their intention is not to apply this.
Exactly.
Okay, all right.
If that, that is the, that is the information that I've received so far.
So if they don't apply this, then they're gonna come.
They'll just come to you for, with a notification.
If they, documenting, documenting the less than twenty-five gallons.
And that they have stipulation.
Okay.
They, fortunately, we have these new aqua protection zone maps that got done a couple years ago, but, you know, they're very, very accurate, and they can file those shakeups to their, uh, total A maps and, um, provide that information to their contractor, so that.
Okay, then, then we'll plan on addressing that when they bring it before us. I think we should still just have a quick non-public at the end, just to touch base on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all we got for that.
Yeah, sorry, Phil.
Thirteen Wadley Point, uh, we actually took your issue up already.
I can't believe you opened that question for.
Uh, before you walked in, uh, we did make a vote to sign the contract, uh, as it was amended with the different amounts. We know you had supplied, uh, a sample, um, a, a sample bond.
Yes.
From our standpoint, you know, as long as it's guaranteed, like, as long as it's guaranteed by a company, we're not really interested in the language, because, you know, they're obviously either posting the money on your behest or whatever, you work out with them, but, uh, so just, we, the board has agreed to sign the contract, and when you come in, if you wish to enter into that contract, you just need to bring the provisions of the bond with you.
Okay, so, then, yeah, I'll, I'll apply for the bond and then.
Yeah.
All right, sounds good.
All right.
Thank you.
Start with the original meetings, I suppose, when some of them are here.
Yeah, if everyone wants to come up around the table, I guess we can get into the community's department head stuff.
Attorney, were, were you planning on addressing the board or asking a question, or, because if you are, you should come to the table.
You're welcome, Bernie. What am I doing with my jacket?
I don't know.
I, I wrote off.
I might, I might have sent.
You want me to go get, oh, you got it?
A bar of Rellies.
All right.
Okay, so, uh, let's just start going around the room. Graham, we'll start with you.
Is it public comment?
No, no, you missed public comment. I already offered that to you.
So we, we've hired three firefighter E M Ts to fill the one vacancy from, uh, one of the, one of my members going to Manchester Fire. Uh, so we've hired Alexandra Head, Garrett Gel, Gelinow, and Dakota Poole. Alexandra and Dakota were, uh, Perdian members, they worked with us for many years, uh, so it was a pretty easy decision there. Garrett comes to us, uh, from Hampstead. So, uh, I will bring them by at some point when they're on shift during a meeting to, to meet the board. But as of right now, with, uh, the vacancies, uh, we're fully staffed. Not fully staffed to where we need to be, but fully staffed with positions that I have available, so, um. Question about, uh, engine three, we repaired the turbo, uh, that was the thirteen thousand. I brought a P O in, I believe, I heard Chuck may have it, I'm not sure, but, um, we just needed to figure out where that money is coming from.
Is that one that, do we know if that could have come out of the revolving amulets, or?
Uh, no, it, that was the ambulance one was repaired, the rear end, and that came out of the revolving fund.
Yeah.
But my, I mean, I don't have that, that amount of money in my rolling stock.
Gotcha.
For, for the budget.
Do you have any other ideas where that could come from?
So, three or four years ago, when the turbo went, uh, in another truck, um, I believe that came from, what's the name of the account? The.
Oh, oh.
Other government, maybe, or something?
I forgot our conversation.
It was a long weekend.
Good festival.
So, what about some of the money that got returned from the, uh?
The generated.
The generated grant, that was sixty-four thousand.
Right.
Generated grant, so that, that's possible, maybe pulling some of that back to cover it. Because you would, you would turn that back in.
Yes.
Other government is fifty thousand.
And this expense is what, thirteen?
Uh, thirteen, I believe, I.
Yeah, we had a P O, and then it was discussed by you guys, but I think Chuck has it.
Chuck has?
It's not.
That doesn't do us any good to them.
We just, we blame the guy that's not here.
That, that is a rule. Whoever's not here, it was their fault, they made that decision.
I have all the other ones.
Okay.
So that, that bill is due, so just.
Yeah, we have, I, I think we'll probably get into a much lengthier budget discussion, and that'll probably follow up with that.
Okay. I have three P Os here, two are for, uh, E O C stuff, one's a portable radio, one's a laptop, uh, and then protect your clothing, so I will leave those with you today. Last thing I have is, uh, we had the Brew Fest on Saturday. Two, two to six seemed to go very well. I, I had to kinda leave early, uh, to go to a personal matter, but, um, we cleaned up yesterday at ten o'clock, so I wanna thank Phil, uh, and his guys for the help with snow fencing and whatever supplying stuff, uh, that we can use. And Joel for the detail officers, so seemed to go off pretty well, and no issue.
Okay, great. Uh, I know Dave Field just came in, I'm assuming this is Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Yes, it is.
Uh, do you guys have somewhere to go? Because we can handle your stuff first, if you have other stuff.
That'd be awesome.
So, uh, Mr. Fitzp, Mr. Fitzpatrick, uh, Dave tells us that, uh, you'd be interested in helping us fill act as the backup.
Yeah, at least when Dave's not around, I'm aware I can help out.
Kyle said that he's highly unqualified to inspect. Plumbing issues. Could, could you just give the board just a, a, a quick rundown background of, uh, you know, your experience?
I grew up in, lived in Placso, I've been, lived in Placso for fifty-plus years. I've been in business myself for twenty-seven years. Been a master plumber for almost thirty years. Residential, like, commercial work myself. I assist David to backup in Placso as well.
Okay.
I deal with local inspectors, state inspectors all the time.
Did Dave advise you how he's compensated and how the terms of that?
Not about that at all.
Would you mind hopefully just kinda explaining him to that? And I think that's probably, you know, if he's acting the backup, that's probably how we would want to do the same.
Yeah, we get paid per inspection, same as Placso.
Okay.
It's actual.
Before somebody says, "Yeah, I absolutely wanna do something," and we, but I, I wanna make sure everyone actually understands what that is, so if, if he had to be paid per inspection, um, does the board, I mean, this is obviously, we know that you have some time off coming up over the, over the summer months.
I hope so.
Having a backup is obviously very important, uh, for us, so does the board have any questions of Mr. Fitzpatrick?
How do you anticipate if our needs fitting in with your schedule?
My schedule, like I said, I'm self-employed, so my schedule revolves around work, so. Afternoon inspections, usually what we do is afternoon inspections, so, um, mainly most days. I'm in the service business, so I get a phone call, and I'm there, so that's basically how we treat inspections as well.
I mean, we're, you know, we're trying.
I mean, we're, you know, we're trying to make all these pieces fit in, and with the objective of, you know, making sure that folks in the community get the service that they need for things like inspections and that sort of thing. So, just want to make sure that if you do this, you're okay with it, you know, that can be done in a timely fashion, and it can all be worked out to everyone.
Usually people get twenty-four hours notice for their inspections.
Yeah.
And it gives me notice when he goes away, or town gives me notice when he's gonna be away, and I can accommodate nicely a little for that.
Great, so I would entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Ryan Fitzpatrick as our backup plumbing inspector under the same terms and conditions as we do with our current plumbing inspector.
Second?
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. At some point, you'll just need to get Paul Mahoney, our Human Resources and Finance Director, and she can get the appropriate paperwork. We need to get you on the payroll and any other information that you're gonna need for that. Alright.
Thank you very much.
Any more?
We're out of here.
So, we will move on to Kyle McManus, for those that haven't met Kyle yet, he is our interim building inspector.
Part-time.
Part-time interim.
It's a good distinction.
It's an important one.
It is an important distinction. So, obviously, getting a backup for the plumber?
Chuck.
I'm not sure what the process again is for getting a backup for building, but I do have somebody who's already said that he would do it.
Yeah.
Michael, who's our health inspector.
And so, would he just want, he would just want that under the same terms that he has it as the health inspector?
You know, I didn't ask him, but I will, and I'll put forward an email or a letter to the board. I don't have any intention for taking any time off between now and the next couple of weeks, so I think that's fine.
So, if we could just clarify all of that, obviously, he's a bit easier, because he's already an employee with the town. So, we would just need to authorize him to act as that backup, so if the board's comfortable with him, just getting that other information together prior to our next meeting, we can take a vote on it.
The other thing that we're currently working on right now, obviously picking up the pieces and reestablishing contact with everybody that needs to be established. We're demoing an online permitting software tomorrow, obviously, it's a no obligation demo, but we do have a, I don't remember if it's a nine or a nine-thirty, online permitting suite. I have no idea of the cost yet, it is part of the conversation for tomorrow. Once we figure out if it's something that's a viable option, then we'll put it forward as appropriate. And then, I have some additional information that's, I'm working on some things that the board has asked. I don't have full information yet on some of the other questions that have been asked of me, in terms of COVID issues and things like that. As soon as I do, I'll put forward a written response to you guys, so that it can be addressed appropriately. That's it, the end.
Quick question, Kyle, the software that you're gonna look at, is it a package that you're familiar with and other work that you've done?
So, it's a package that I'm familiar with on the contractor or homeowner side. I have no idea what the back of the house looks like, that's not a part of the business that I've ever been in, so.
Okay.
That's, it is something that, my understanding, having talked to a couple of different inspectors who use it since we started talking about it, is that they love it. In terms of inter-office communication, interdepartmental communication, obviously, record keeping, for them, it's a single-source piece of, they can do a single response. And the information gets distributed appropriately. I know from my perspective as a contractor, it's extremely contractor-friendly. You don't need to worry about when the office is open, payments can be made online, everything can be done online. They send everything back to us via email. If I want to look it up, I can type it into my phone, I can look it up right now, right here, to see status of permits.
What's the name of the software?
Viewpoint is what we recognize it as, but it's, I think it's open, open.gov is what the municipality would recognize it as. That's who, I don't know if it's the parent company or what, but I know that we recognize it as.
That's probably the product name.
Like, if you go to Viewpoint, it'll take you to open.gov.
You, you spelled out, or me, you spelled it?
Yeah, you spelled it.
Okay.
You know, several of the other larger municipalities are using this package. I did talk to one of the reps last week, and explained to him that we're not, we're not running so many permits that we can afford necessarily this huge permitting suite. His answer to me was he didn't have a hard number for it, he'd get something, but that they make it affordable to the municipalities that want it. So, I don't really know what that means.
Is this something we're thinking about investigating now for the possibility of budgeting for for next year, or if we were gonna do it this year?
Yeah. And I'll tell you, Tom, our electrical inspector spoke highly about this program too. He said a lot of the towns in Massachusetts, inspectors of mass use it too.
And I, I mean, as we get further along in the process, I'm gonna have the same concern, the same question as I did when Phil was talking about some of his software, and that is, how does it get integrated and meshed with other systems in the town? And, you know, stuff like that.
Yeah, that's something I'm not sure, I don't, I don't know if it's a standalone suite. I kind of think it would be.
I think it is.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's specific for permitting. If, for example, the highway department administrates driveway permits, we issue them, but they're administered through them. So, I would assume that as a driveway permit, for example, was, an application was received, I would assume that Phil would be the one who would be notified, hey, here's the information, you need to do whatever you do to make sure that that's acceptable. And, you know, and I think that would just be by way of email chain, but, well, these are all the things that I don't know yet.
But, for instance, if it, if it also had a payment component to it? Yeah. You want to make sure a town can accept it, have an account.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So, that's all, that's all, but I'm sure that will all come out in the.
I've worked in some towns where they don't, where they disallow the payment component, where we have to go in and hand the check. But, I have also worked in a lot of towns where they allow a credit card, so you can do your, do your thing that way.
I would like to visit another town that uses it, or use any similar, or Centauri, just to see how it works in the office.
I, I, I mean, a part of my conversation tomorrow is to make sure that they allow for open access training. They'll come in and help us set it up, if they don't do that, then, I mean, they have to do that, they're not, I don't know of any software suite that's not helping you to use their stuff.
Yeah. But I think Susan's point is a good one, and that is that, you know, from a vendor's perspective, it's all well and good, but the customer's experience with it is really important. Yeah. This is the one that most of Massachusetts uses, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, Portsmouth is using it also, Portsmouth, New Hampshire, I think Rainland, New Hampshire is using it, I mean, there's, there's, they're kind of becoming a bandaid. I've used other, you know, other municipalities have other smaller packages. They're not that typically clunky and.
Not for New Hampshire.
Yeah. The only other thing for us is inter-office communications, we're gonna be reworking, kind of taken when we started. I don't remember his last name, I apologize, Rich, I was told bought four iPads for the department, and we're gonna be in process of getting those out through the department. And I'm setting up some Teams communication levels, so that we can make sure that we're, we have some additional appropriate documentation, what's going on, different jobs. It'll be all recorded documentation, we'll make other people, whoever is appropriate within the town, can have access to whatever. It's all with the line communication, I'm not sure what your familiarity is with Teams, it's something that we all have.
Yep.
It's already paid for, it's upon the MS three-sixty-five.
Yep.
So, we're gonna be, we're gonna be utilizing that information for a lot of our things right now, where we already own it, to help try and clean some of that stuff up. Make that communication a little bit more streamlined. So, for what if that's worth?
It is.
That's worth a lot.
Our human services department?
We are still seeing food pantries and pantry halls, that kind of spikes out to draw off after the winter, but that has not happened. We should be getting the fresh produce soon from Trinity Church. I'm gonna be sending out the food pantry newsletter this week to let people know. I attended the follow-up seminar for the age study, and spoke to the seniors that attended about the department will be available. We did some roundtable, had some little discussions, some good ideas from that. There's a new food pantry opening up in town, I've heard about this, Joseph Storehouse, a key to the waiting location. They recently started our coordination with them, which I'm anticipating efforts, so we're working together on that. I also made contact with the Sandown District to kind of coordinate resources for them as well. We have not spoken with them before that I know of. I spoke to the lead guidance officer who handles their food program, just to make sure around families slipping through the cracks between the school system and us. And the last thing I have is that comedy show is finally planned for July twenty-seventh to benefit the food pantry, so I'm gonna start publicizing that. That's gonna be in the news, Barry.
Alright. Please, go ahead.
So, a lot of what I have today relates to the age-friendly community survey. I have the final of emsies that Scott Vogel of Rockingham Planning Commission wrote up, and then a draft of his final report. So, I'm gonna pass those to my. So, just as a reminder, this was a project that the library volunteered to take charge and take the lead, and together with the services, planning, and the rec department, we embarked on setting up a steering committee. And there were three members of the public who joined us there. We had two forums, we had two-hundred-and-fifty people respond to our survey, which is better than almost any other town that's involved in this. They were really quite pleased, we had fifty-four people show up at our first forum, and they were actually blown away, because no other town had that many people show up. So, there is definitely an interest among seniors in what we're going to do for them. The second forum, we have smaller turnout, but we were competing against an event that Brett Carter was running, we didn't realize it. So, the big takeaways from the report, one was, they want more communication about what's available to seniors, so we've already started acting on that. Marissa, Paul, and I meet monthly, and we talk about ways that we can help all of our constituents. And we also, we now call it, I think, a social services group, we've brought in the thrift store, the church that's doing its own food pantry, and we're all going to eat together monthly to see how we can better help the people of Kingston. But in terms of communication, we started a monthly newspaper column that Alicia has agreed to do in Carriage Town. You may have seen the first one go out a few weeks ago. The library has set up a seniors site, and I've also purchased KingstonSeniors.org, which will become the main site, I'm currently working on that, and I'm hoping that the whole town will just add things to that site. Well, the three of us are communicating quite a bit to get the word out about our events. We put another bulletin board up in the library just for town events, especially as related to seniors, and rec and human services are helping us get out news about our Facebook posts and that kind of thing. Paul and I also went and we visited Vic Gary to see what they're doing as a senior center in Placso. They really don't do anything that library and rec don't do here. The only difference is a space issue, so we don't really have space for seniors to just come and hang out. When we went there, seniors came, and they were playing games, and just chatting, and having coffee, and, so we're looking for ways to make that kind of space for people. But in terms of programming and things, we are right there with the senior centers. We just don't fill ourselves as a senior center, and that might be a marketing issue that we have to work on. The other takeaway from the report is that they want more, they, meaning the people who took the survey, want more senior programs in town, but I think that's more of a communication issue, they don't know what's available to them. And they kept saying that they wanted a senior center, but I really think that the library kind of serves that purpose right now, and we're gonna boost our marketing stuff in that area. The third takeaway is transportation, and this is what Rockingham County is finding throughout the county, is a transportation issue. So, after our first forum, several seniors said to me that they want to be able to help other seniors, so maybe we'll start a seniors driving seniors project, something like that. I've also posted on that seniors library page, a bunch of places people can get transportation, because again, it might be a communications issue, that they just don't know what's available to them. Scott Vogel, who put the survey together, is a transportation expert, that's his expertise for the planning commission, so I'm hoping that he'll come up with some good ideas for transportation too. And I'm hoping that we can meet with Phil to discuss some of this as well, because I think perhaps he would have interest in that. Any questions about?
Tell them about the website for the seniors.
Yeah, so the library has a website for the seniors. We start with library news, and then give regular, anything that is of interest, anything that can help seniors related to health, where they can get tax help, where they can get pretty much anything that's specific to seniors. And now, I'm gonna migrate to that KingstonSeniors.org page that I purchased recently.
So, that new page will be its own site, it won't be part of another site?
Correct. So, right now, the library owns it, but that might change the accounting thing over time, but I just took the initiative to start it, because I saw it, so. So, kind of related to this, like, I have mentioned this a little bit, the library is starting an outdoor space project, they have all that space outside that I don't think is well utilized. This started a year and a half ago, with Stephanie Hasselbeck coming before you to ask for a pavilion. And when I came on board, I said, well, why don't we think about that, what does, and actually, in my interview with her, I said, why do pavilions, do people want a pavilion? So, we did a, we're ending today as a survey of our outdoor space, what do people want from our outdoor space, and we're working with a landscape architect to determine what's appropriate for that space. What we're envisioning is handicap accessibility, because people mentioned in the age-friendly community survey that they don't feel like they have good places to walk, because they're, because of lack of sidewalks. So, we thought the library space is big enough for seniors to walk, if we expand our trails, if we make things flatter, so that's something that we talked to the landscape architect about as a possibility. And we're also hoping to connect our trail, King's Landing, I was very interested, I met with them last week, they actually had written, I guess they came before you, a while ago, when that property between the library and King's Landing was purchased. They made sure that was written into the Freeman that a trail would be put in by the developer. So, I need to contact the developer and figure out where that space, so we can connect to King's Landing, so that would be nice for those folks. But I'm also looking to connect to the cell trail, and I kind of floated this myself last year, they weren't done home about it, I need to go back and talk to them, talk to them again. The pavilion for kids programs, we've been having a tent the past few years, you may have noticed, rather than, rather than borrowing a tent every year, I'd like to have a pavilion that would provide shade for kids, or for reading groups in the summertime. The other, the final thing, there were some other things, like people expressed interest in a splash pad, I don't know how realistic that is, but we were kind of dreaming big. But the last thing that I think is, to me, is my priority, is getting a, I can't remember the terms, but I think of it as a three-season room, where you have these bars up in the winter, but then their sides come down, and the roof goes over in the summertime, and you can heat it. So, then it would be usable from March through October, and to me, that would be our senior center. That would be a place where seniors could come and hang out, and have tables out there, they could play cards, and I think that would complete the idea of Kingston offering all it can for seniors, because we do have the programs, it's just that space that's needed. So, I've talked to a landscape architect, I'm talking to an architect who builds structures, and we're seeking grants for this, and Glenn has been helping me a little bit in terms of identifying grants and talking about. And Glenn has, has, um, been helping me a little bit in terms of identifying grants and, and, uh, talking about what, what we can do. Um, we do have a little nest egg for the library, so we are gonna have to put out a warrant article next year. And I don't know who, I think Susan, I'll need to go to you to talk about that, because we have the money, but we can't access it without permission.
Okay.
And then in terms of grant, I, I'd like to seek the select, selectmen's support in term, in terms of a letter about this being useful. And I'll write up a little thing with bullets and send it to each of you to explain, um, what the value of this project to, to Kingston. So we have a lot of things happening at the, at the library, um, and I'll keep you informed as we go. We also have summer reading, and I, I put together some summer reading packets that we have for adults, teens and kids. Um, the program will culminate on August fifth, and I'll probably need a police detail. We're gonna do that imaginary festival.
So, Chris, um, I know that under old business, we have the CCB coaching and technical assistance, which is the, that pilot NHMA program.
Yeah.
It might be appropriate just to hit on that now while Melissa is here.
Yeah, that's fine.
Unless you're gonna be around later for that.
Is that after?
I, I just wanna make sure we get, I just wanna make sure we get off the apartment, because it's not over that schedule.
I can stay around.
Okay.
Public works, what do you all say?
Uh, a couple of things. Kyle and I came across a discrepancy between the fee schedule and the regulation for driveway permits. Uh, it's still twenty-five dollars for any driveway permit. In the regulation, the fee schedule is seventy-five dollars. I have some questions whether that was actually done legally, the fee schedule, whether there was an appropriate hearing held on that. I believe there was supposed to be two hearings, and I think there was one. Um, but regardless, I'm in favor of keeping it at twenty-five dollars. I think this is not something we're trying to make money off of. We're trying to keep people from putting in problems for.
When was the fee schedule adopted?
Was it like a year ago?
Yeah, I think, yeah, it was June, July timeframe, about a year ago.
At least a year ago. I think you're right, there was.
Yeah, I, I think it has to be two if there's a change.
Was that the, was that the only piece that was changed or?
No.
They made a whole schedule.
Okay, I mean, and so we should, if there was only one hearing held on that, we may have to suspend any of that and rehold the hearing.
And I could absolutely be wrong on that, but I.
You had previously spoken with me about, you thought that the seventy-five dollar fee for the driveway permits was way too much anyway.
Again, it's, are we trying to make money or ensure compliance? And I think this is one where we want to ensure compliance. But it's not about taxes or anything, it's just about.
Making sure the apron's correct.
Well, that they're not dumping water onto the road or creating a hazard for the roadway. So just to bring that to your attention, also, uh, there's been some talk about the perambulate, perambulations work that needs to be done with neighboring towns, one of which has approached us. Um, I guess previously this was done by, I'm not saying a layer, but in the RSA, it specifically states that the person has to be appointed in writing by the select board. If the select board isn't gonna be handling it, so I would just need to be appointed in writing for that duty to be.
Is the board comfortable with that? And then would you drop that up to a point and then we can sign it?
So I'll do some more research, but apparently we have been looking for a surveyor to do the work. And there is provisions for you to just walk the line with the neighboring community and come to an agreement. That's been our practice previously, so. I'll find some more information on what exactly needs to be done in that process, but that should save us any expense.
Wouldn't it make sense to walk the lines with, with, with our neighbors, because these borders have been set in place for quite some time. It's not like, you just wanna make sure there's nothing new that's followed up unknown to us.
Yeah, I think as the technology has progressed, there have been some fines over the years when people have called in a surveyor and done actual, you know, satellite location. And it does make a difference because you're basically taxed where, where the bedroom is in a dwelling, so it could, and, and there are a couple of things that I think are missed that, but yes.
Okay.
Um, we're required by law to do it every seven years, and it's at our expense, since we are the oldest town of everybody except Exeter that we touch, so, um, that falls on us. So we'll get it started with Brentwood and I'll figure out the process and we'll go from there. Just so everybody's aware, I have one employee still out and then I have another one on light duty. So I'm down one and a half, one and three quarters employees, got five pounds of restriction, so, um, we're behind. In case anyone's wondering where we've been, we're out there. Hope the rec gets started for their big day today. Um, next up will be the Grace Daily Barn. We're gonna be getting the floor opened up in there and doing some exploratory work to figure out our path forward on that. We will be closed on the third of July. All of my employees will be taking vacation that day, so no one will be there. We have had a lot of beaver activity, and as the, um, pest control was assigned to my department, I just wanna give you a heads up that that's been probably more than a normal year, we've had to call in the trapper, just threats to bridges and culverts in our town, right down the street from you. That you've got quite the active community down there. Um, so just a heads up to the board that that may be something we may be running up on. And then the sound panel project, I think, sitting in the back row, I can certainly hear a lot better than I've ever been able to hear in this room. And, and I've gotten a lot of feedback from people that the TV broadcasts are a lot more, uh, audible, so.
Phil, while you're on that subject, um, was there a decision made not to do the ceiling now?
So we are holding off until the new microphones are in, because this plaster is very, very crumpling. And that, it, gravity and bad plaster working against us, I think will be creating a problem. So if the microphones kind of solve the issue, I think we're.
Yeah, if you can get by with what you've done and with the new sound, it, it might work.
Yeah, so we're holding off on that and just see how, how it plays out. Oh, and we had a situation brought to our attention. Fifty-eight A and fifty-eight B Main Street. It's one of those people with two prop, two buildings on the same property type of deals, uh, but it's not a commercial property. Most of those other ones have been commercial owner occupied properties. This is actually two separate houses, um, that are on the same property. And they are requesting a second trash tote. So, because they have two houses there, it's not a seasonal one, they're both full-time residences.
And both residences have been there for a while. They're not new buildings, they're.
Correct, and Tori had sent a, uh, let's see if it's in here, there's a letter from the board in twenty-ten. And it basically, they gave a refund on their taxes because there's one lot, so they had been charged as two lots. And it was basically recognizing that by the town, so I'm not sure, again, we're gonna run into these one-off situations, but, um.
But I mean, it's, it's clearly, but as far as the structures, they're being taxed as like two different structures.
No, they're two separate property cards, because I, I'm guessing prior to the twenty-ten decision, it was two lots. Or they assumed they were two lots, but it is two tax cards, one tax bill.
One bucket. One tax bill.
Two tax cards, one bill?
Yes. One owner.
Yeah, because it's one piece of property.
It's one owner, we, we, two, so they get two, charge for the property and then two bills.
That's what I'm saying, they're being taxed for like two occupied structures.
Yes, the structures themselves are being taxed.
That's, that's, that's my concern. So this would be one of those ones where I think they're entitled to that barrel for the other building.
If they're two legitimately recognized residential structures.
And are being taxed as two residential structures, then they should.
Okay, yeah.
Anything else?
That's enough.
Alright, for now. Please depart.
Happy to report that, um, that scam alert that we put in the flyer with the tax bills, haven't had one scam set. So that's, that's a good thing. Um, we talked about details, raising the price of details, so you got my email. Have you made a decision whether you can approve that?
Well, this would be the day that we can make that decision.
That what?
This would be the day that we can make that decision. So you, you guys covered the roll-up costs, Paula calculated the, the roll-up costs that would be required for that.
Yeah.
Did anyone else have any other questions for that? Obviously with him increasing the detail rate, we just wanted to make sure the additional administrative costs were covered. So if there's no other question.
We wanted to roll to, uh, round it out to eighteen instead of seventeen sixty, just for.
For the, yeah, that is, so it would be, what would?
Be fifty-five.
And then eighteen.
Eighteen and twenty.
And then cruiser is twenty.
Correct.
Okay.
I'll second it for discussion, uh, but the cruiser, it's twenty-four non-resident and it's waived for resident?
Yeah, uh, ten dollars for the resident.
Oh, it's, it's half of.
Yeah, good, so we'll just cut it down.
Any further discussion on the changes to the detail rate? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
Uh, the only other thing is the, um, the glocks have been ordered. It's gonna take about probably another hundred, hundred days to get them. So, um, other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Okay. Paula?
Uh, okay, so I have a lot. Um, I mean, do you wanna talk about, um, the stuff we write?
Yeah, yeah.
Just to preface it, Paula and I met and, and first we brought this up the prior meeting. We're, we're discovering more budget shortfalls, so I asked Paula to put together a brief today. I, I didn't make a lot, I made like seven, so. To, to brief so we can all understand, um, the situation and, and discuss how we're gonna move forward. So that's, that's what Paula's gonna talk about. So, so, um, the computer maintenance, we're potentially over the eighteen thousand, but that fifteen thousand of additional charges, we can hold off on. It's not like mandatory. The only part of that that could be is, um, and I'm double checking with Glock Five, is the switch for the server at the, that's eight thousand. I think that was the most important one, but they said not till like November. We have to November for that.
Just, just on that, and, and, sorry, didn't interrupt. Anything with Glock Five, I mean, they're, they're a great company. I love what they do for us. For the TVs, for the EOC, they quoted us twenty-six, twenty-six hundred apiece, and I found them for like fourteen hundred. So, same exact, it's they, it's their job, not that they make money, but they upcharge everything. So if the media needs a switch, maybe do some research and find some.
Yeah, I have found that with other purchases that we've done. Um, so I'm not too worried about the computer thing, because we can hold off till next budget season if we need to. Sanitation, we already knew about, it's about, I think we're gonna be about seventy-eight thousand over. Um, I found that the recycling has been, assuming it stays this way, like sixty-six hundred a month, that extra new thing. Um, so at first it was nine, it's been sixty-six hundred for the last couple of months, so.
Well, to give a shout out to mailers like the chief did, most people aren't recycling now, apparently.
Yes.
Saving us tons of money.
So, um.
That should stay with branding, right?
It should theoretically.
Yeah, so that eighty-four, I think I did it at seven thousand a month, like, because I just wanted to be safe. Um, and then, I'm just getting these for now, assessing, um, apparently we're under a new contract, which.
No, just the fifth year of the contract.
Or the fifth year was a change of fees, so we're already spent thirty-three thousand almost from our twenty-one thousand dollar budget. Um, but the fees for the year are gonna come to seventy-eight thousand, so we're over fifties, we're going to be over fifty-six.
So to give some context to this, obviously, perfect storm prevents in the town, a lot of turnover in key administrative positions in the town in the past twenty-four months. Uh, including finance, Susan's position, so long-term department head's turnover.
Select board members.
So a lot of select board member turnover, so we kind of lost a lot of institutional knowledge. And there was some stuff that was absolutely missed during the budgeting process. People didn't pull out the contract for assessing and realize that the first four years were a set amount, and then the fifth year where they go out and do the physical assess, assessment was almost sixty thousand dollars more. So the budget only accounted for the tw, the twenty-three thousand dollar that was originally in there. And so that was a budget shortfall that didn't get accounted for.
Because this year is the big year of them assessing.
The sanitation came from obviously commodities market changes and us being bound in the terms of the contract. And so what we did at our, at our, you know, essentially when, after Paula had the audit, we kind of put a freeze on everything, making some important decisions on cost expenditures, because we wanted to review every contract the town had, because if we missed something there, I guaranteed there was going to be something else that was missed and it looks like we found some other items. So globally, the conversation that we wanted to have with department heads is too, and the reason we're making all of it, listen, your individual apartments, they, departments, they may not be affected by this, and this isn't your fault. But this is a, we put forward a very ambitious budget supporting raises, supporting things that the community needed. So what we want the department heads to understand is that this is the year where, say you had something in your budget and you had it for ten grand. And you come back and you're like, oh geez, it only came in at eight thousand dollars. This is not the year where you are thinking, well, I didn't put this other thing in my budget, because it was really just a want, not a need, but now I have this extra two grand, so I'm gonna ask for this. This isn't that year. We need any money that can be returned or items that are not an absolute need to accomplish this year to make up for some of these unintended spec, uh, expenditures, because the last thing we'd want is the town to have to be in a situation where we would have to borrow money. And we don't wanna just deplete all the, there are other projects, people wanting to do some major renovations, uh, to, in particularly the town hall and, you know, the, the ARPA funding is there to c, complete some other projects. We don't want to deplete all of that money for, whoops, we missed that. Um, so it, it's, it, trust me, it's gonna be a very difficult rest of the budget, but we're glad we caught a lot of it early, instead of it month ten and eleven realizing that, oh no. Um, so we caught it earlier than they did, but Paula's been going through everything and, uh, Lori sat down with Paula to look over a bunch of stuff. So we're just trying to head this off and just make everyone mindful that if you have some leftover reserve funds, this isn't the, this is, this is the needs year, not the wants year. So we need to make sure we return some of that money to the budget to make up for this.
So the other part that I skipped over for a minute was the, um, the water analysis that is through, um.
The water techs?
Water techs. So it goes under the water analysis, which is under the health department, which, um, was budgeted at twelve thousand. Well, this year I just got, so we get billed, um, once a year in June for July to December and then January to June. Like, they just do it once. Um, so I just got the invoices and the total is sixteen thousand. I don't know where that twelve thousand came from.
And you're working with them, because it appears as though they might be double billing us.
So I, well, I looked back. Yeah, I'm making them prepare a contract for us, because they said it was just verbal with when we went through this PFO stuff with the state. Um, so they're creating that, and I looked back at prior years and it was like twelve thousand seven hundred were the yearly fees. This year we added one more property, um, so we got billed in February for, for thirty-two hundred, which was unexpected. And then this is the part that now I feel that we were double billed is, um, for four, three of the properties, they billed us for carbon exchange service, which is, if you read their actual contract, their yearly contract is part of it. So I'm trying to, Lori and I, I even called them and I said, uh, I think we're double billed, and they're trying to explain it. I want it all. I asked them for everything in writing, um, this all came last week. Um, so I have a PO for the yearly contract. I just held off on giving it to you for right now.
Who's the contractor?
It's water techs. It's who the state uses, that it was like, we've used them for five or six years.
With no contract in place.
Yeah, it used to be advanced radon mitigation. Um, and their specific words were that it, there is no paper contract. It was just verbal when the state mandated all this testing. Um, and this is, they go and test the actual, um, what is it, filters and stuff at people's houses.
Yep.
There were five. There's, there were five, now there's six houses. Uh, well, five houses, one five station. Um, so I don't know where that twelve thousand came from, but it's sixteen thousand, yeah.
And so that, this is just, we are gonna bring up at all our monthly department head meetings, we are going to talk about the budget and where we are in shortfall. So as you are going through your budgets, if you have projects that have come up and been cheaper and you can express to the board that, hey, this is gonna be some leftover money added. You can start making us notified of potential, uh, cost savings places, we're gonna need to know that on a monthly basis. And then for anyone that wasn't at the meeting, part of the board's decision to not, uh, fill the full-time building code enforcement position at this time was directly related to the cost savings. So that was a, it was a big salary, uh, not to mention the roll of benefits, costs, retirement costs. So we decided to continue and, uh, Kyle was agreed to stay on to at least the end of the year as the part-time interim, uh, building, part-time, part-time interim building inspector. Uh, and during that timeframe, the town's, we just want to evaluate the needs of whether it should be full-time. You know, we may decide it's gonna continue as full-time after that, but, uh, there was a substantial cost savings to be made, and that's why we made that decision, because we're gonna need that money.
And the last thing is our contracted services account, and that's the Sanborn Head, um, Eastern Analytical, the P F O's testing. That was where we had tried to request for a little over a hundred grand in the budget, but it was, it ended up at eighty. Well, the contracted fees are going to be about a hundred and twenty three thousand, so we're gonna be about forty three over. And this is state mandated, we can't do anything about it. But I know that there's a grant that we're trying, right, to, so some of the, uh, the testing, like the, um, water analysis stuff may be able to. But it's not gonna probably be for this year, it'll probably be for next year.
Well, it proba- it, it, it certainly wouldn't be for anything prior to when a grant contract, uh, is signed off. Which probably wouldn't be until later this summer. Uh, from that point forward, uh, some of this can probably get covered. How much of it gets covered will depend on what the state will allow and, and we'll, we'll have to talk with them about that.
So, yep, right now it looks like we could potentially be over two hundred thousand dollars.
So.
Over budget, you keep saying over, but it.
Over budget, sorry.
And so that's obviously problematic, so we're looking, so I'm gonna, we're gonna, I kinda wanted Kyle to get set to get an idea of how many hours he was using a week. And that'll help us calculate, uh, how much of the savings we're gonna look at from the holding of that position. Uh, we do have some other things that we're looking at to see where we can realize those savings, but if you got savings anywhere, please let us know about it. And listen, we understand it's not your guys' fault, and I understand some of this doesn't affect your departments, but we just, we wanna, we really pushed, uh, an aggressive budget as a whole. And we need to, as a whole, we need to work together to make sure we're covering that in it.
I can tell you it's roughly fifteen to twenty hours is what I'm gonna.
Um, and then, at, uh, we're, we're almost done with the, um, benefits, like going through our personnel menu, we have like, what, ten pages left or something?
Twelve.
Twelve. Um, so our next meeting, hopefully we'll get through that, and then we can type it all back up and go through it again just to finalize and then present. Um, and at our last meeting, we also talked about starting a joint loss committee again, right? Um, so it is important, I learned about, I actually had a meeting when I was in, um, my seminar with, uh, Primex. And they are getting stricter with coming out. So, um, it used to meet once a quarter and it's one person from each department. So we should start thinking about getting that back together. And I think that was, the audit went well.
Yay.
They said there weren't, they didn't find anything big, um, they worked knowing that I had only been here three months and that there was a lot of change in the year. Um, so they really worked with us and they said there weren't any big issues, so.
That'd be great.
I think that's it.
Nice to hear that something went well.
Yeah.
Hey, finally some good news when it came to accounting.
If we made any headway with the A wage salary study committee liaison, did you?
I put out a notice asking for residents that might be interested in serving, cause you need, you want a couple of people on that committee, so I haven't gotten anything yet.
So it, it should, looked like it appeared in the paper as well.
It did, yeah, but no, no, there's no response from it. Could we?
How many do you need? Two?
Two.
Two. Yeah, we, we could, we could reach out to folks and.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 reach out to some, if anyone knows anyone that may be interested, as soon as we have that, we can start the meetings, cause my intention was I would have liked to have had our first meeting back in April. Tammy?
Uh, good morning, um, we still have two hundred dogs that are overdue to be licensed. We will, um, slap on the civil forfeiture next week. We have six point six million dollars in taxes that are due next week. We will be open on July third, but we close at four that Monday. Um, we recently moved around the office to accommodate our new person. Um, Caitlin started this morning going down to the rec department two mornings a week to take payments. She had a lot of business, I think it really worked out well, um, and then it's gonna make it easier for us to do the accounting for it, to give to Paula. Um, we had our, um, D M V audit two weeks ago and we did great, we're done with that. And I am on vacation this week, but I will be in today and tomorrow morning, I'm sorry, today and Thursday morning, because Caitlin will be down at K. That's it.
Great, great. Paul?
Oh, sorry for being late, it's first time. So that's so busy, but, uh, I wanted to thank T P W for getting things ready at camp, um, that was very helpful. Paul helping with all the salaries and all that stuff, I had to adjust a few. Um, and then of course Tammy and Caitlin, uh, Caitlin and I talked quite a bit about different ways to make sure we're getting, everybody's getting the right money. But people really seem to appreciate, um, being able to pay there, to pay there and do that. A lot of them, it's a lot of, well, my wife does that and my husband does that, and so, but I think once they get used to it, it'll be a great, great way to do that, and so that's really helpful. Uh, camp's off to a good start, we got all the concerts we need, um, you know, things are ready and, um, I'm hoping, I heard somebody told me that there will only be five sunny days in July. So I have four field trips, so I'll just take those four, and then there'll be one more. Um, should I bring up the thing I mentioned?
Sure.
Okay, so I've driven by that red car out there quite a few times, um, coming in and out of here, and it kinda struck me the other day. That maybe I could use that to take probably seniors out, I realized it would only be three people. But take them out and go for a ride to get ice cream or to just ride around, listen to music or go out to lunch or whatever, um, three at a time. Um, just thought I had, when talking to Caitlin, we also kinda thought it'd be good, it's not good for the car to sit there. If Kyle's not using it, it's good to have it be used, um, rather than just, um, sitting there.
Yeah, I did, I followed up with Kyle, he said that the inspectors have no use for it right now, and obviously I think it's horrible for it to just sit there and not go unused. So I would be in support of that, and I just one question, Susan, I'm not sure, Susan, are you followed up? Just make sure Primex is okay with it?
Yeah, right.
And that would, that would rely, right, right. The, the only other thing, Paul, was what you and I talked about, and I think you followed up, and that is, uh, since it was a, a safety vehicle, is the interior fitted out in a way that you can use it appropriately?
I, I really, I looked in there, it was hard to see in there, but I didn't see anything that was, I thought the, the back, you know, was covered with something and looks inaccessible to me, but.
Would you, you'd be, wouldn't use anyway, right?
Right, so.
You'd be using the front seat and then the rear seat?
Yeah, I'm picturing three, three people.
Yeah.
But Kyle, do you know if there's?
I have no idea.
So, yeah, there's, there's, there's no cage in the back, it's a.
Is that plastic?
It's a cool box.
There's, yeah, there's, there's four seats with the driver and, you know, you know, regular seat belts and all that stuff. Um, and in the back, there's just, uh, I forgot what's on the, yeah, box, uh, like command box, so it has a whiteboard back there.
No way, man.
I, I don't know if Jess had anything in there?
I, I, I did look in it just to see if there was plans of permanent.
Do you, do you, do you possibly need that box removed in case you had somebody with a walker or wheelchair that, would you would need to put in there?
I, I will say it's not the most comfortable vehicle, especially in the backseat, so.
Is it plastic or?
No, uh, no, I'm just like, legroom isn't great, uh, but it's, it's regular seats.
Yeah, I mean, I don't wanna be discriminatory, but it might be limited to people that can get in and out of vehicles, okay, that, you know, I'm, I don't, I joke myself trying to get somebody into a, on a wheelchair.
Okay.
To, you know, to a vehicle, I, I just, I don't have the strength for that.
My, my understanding is the battery's dead right now, but.
Oh, no.
So we, we'll send some of them.
It, it wouldn't start.
Okay.
Start actually.
Well, it might need a jump.
I don't know, it just needs to jump.
What's that, did you maybe help them out getting it started or?
Sure.
We have a jump pack at the station.
Okay. So anyone?
So, I think it was Paul's thought that, that, you know, obviously better to use the vehicle than not.
Yes.
Uh, sitting there doesn't do it any good, uh, it's a resource for the town and, you know, it was Paul's thought that if, uh, if, if it could be used, it might be a way for him to, uh, expand his offerings a little bit.
Yeah.
For services to, uh.
Yeah, and it wouldn't be like going to the doctor or, you know.
Right, it wouldn't be an on-demand ride service.
Pure, it's recreation.
That's no one was.
Yeah, that's pure recreation, it's for something fun, it would be planned, you know, Tuesday morning from nine to eleven, we're gonna go walk, travel on the coast and then stop off at, just get an ice cream or.
And my concern, just with the caveat being that if this returns to a full-time code enforcement position, that potentially you're required to go back.
Right, it's temporary, right, I understand that, yeah.
I would be remiss if I didn't voice some of Chuck Hart's concern about the vehicle, given the budget shortfall in his comment, he's, he's not here today, but his comment was. That maybe we should take the vehicle off the road and save money insurance and save some money that way, whether that was even worth it or not.
It's very, 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 very minimal.
Very minimal, yes.
I assume, I assume it's part of, of Paul's, yeah.
It's so minimal.
Like you said, I felt obliged.
Yeah.
I, I thought into that previously and, and taking a truck off and putting one on is pennies. So with that being said, if all of a sudden there's a major repair it needs, we may not be looking back.
It could stay like that, right?
Next year.
A bare jump is one thing.
I was thinking of saying, you know, charging five bucks for gas and whatever, and that would cover, it should cover the gas, I would think, so.
I, I think that would be, I, I would expect that that would be in your hands to decide.
Yeah.
Structure that, yeah. Do you want?
I'd say very.
I, I don't, I think as long as nobody has any opposition or they're, they're demanding a vote, I think it's just a consensus board.
I think it also goes, I think it also goes along with the age.
Friendly.
That's, that's, I can never, but it, it feeds one of those needs. Granted, very small and maybe very temporarily, but it, it does feed it for, take what we get while we can get it. I'll be getting a van at some point, I assume, so we'll just.
Not this year?
Yeah.
I'll just let you know that if I get anything back from Primex that.
Okay. Um, so is, I guess, before we, uh, jump into, I know you got the presentation at ten. Uh, I just, any department that doesn't plan on staying for that presentation, we just had some P Os in here, I might wanna go over those.
Would you want, um, some of the boards and?
Yeah, 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 oh, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, cause I could say committee stuff.
Okay.
Yeah.
Please.
So the planning board has a request, we have, um, we'd like a permission for Lynn Greenwood to speak with town council over two issues. One is the continuing issue at the veterans, um, proposed home at one eighty five Main Street.
One eighty six, six.
Eighty six, I'm sorry.
One, one eighty six.
That's right. That's out of the cover. Um, there's an issue where they're not, maybe with the planning board changing the purpose again and putting it as a duplex with, um, three veterans on each side. Each bedroom is to be rented separately. So we need to check with town council, because this has attorneys involved on, from a butters and everything else, we do need to check the town council. To see if there's any change in her viewpoint on this, uh, before we have our next hearing, which is in, um, is in July, the third, Tuesday in July. Second thing we need, uh, we'd like to talk to town council about is the C J and J, uh, refrigerated, uh, sales and storage facility, uh, Lu one twenty five. The town has ordinance that says that anything that's vehi- vehicular related must be one thousand feet from anything else that is vehicular related. And we'd sort of like to have the vehicular related defined a little bit more clearly, so that we know if this type of facility is considered vehicular related or not.
The problem being is that if you read the language, the grammar that they use in it could easily be argued either way. So we'd like town council to review it, since she would be the one defending it either way, we'd like her input on her interpretation of how it was structured. Cause it, it's another, it's a case of poor wording in an way.
I think the intent, I think the intent of that ordinance was, um, uh, to limit the number of vehicle sales, uh, facilities along with one twenty five. And so keeping some separation.
And that was my understanding too, cause the town didn't want it to be the auto mile, Kingston and, but just the, the language in there, it doesn't.
Language doesn't say that.
Separation between the types.
Yeah.
So we, we just wanna make sure that town council, since, like I said, no matter which way a project goes, somebody's gonna be unhappy and potentially mitigate it.
One of the things we were thinking, um, we were interpreting, uh, could, it could be interpreted as recreational vehicle versus recreational vehicle sales, thousand feet apart. Car versus car, or is it car versus recreational, in which case this might fit, because it is indeed vehi- vehicular and, and so we just need it defined. And so we'd like your permission, please, to speak to town council to make sure that those are done before litigation starts.
I, I obviously have a, I.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to authorize, um, uh, town planner Lynn Greenwood to contact council with regard to those two issues.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I know, uh, any other boards or committees that wanna give input to that? In the audience, don't be shy.
I just wanna thank the boards, whether it's coming from ten, Nichols, one hundred twenty fifth, Ada Rosberg. That was very well attended and we would respect the, you know, spending time with us, but they, they do.
It was well done, uh, congrats to all who participated in that and made it happen. And it was, it was well attended and it was a great event.
Ms. Landry, do you have anything to add? It's back to. Paula? All right.
To, to.
Yeah, what?
Um, first, I would like to thank the fire department for responding to our house on fire. And the police who showed up, um, it's a little chimney incident, but everything was fine. Um, so, but thank you, everybody was very professional and I really appreciate it. I just didn't have the presence of mind to ask their names to, so I'm just doing a public thank you. Um, Susan and Paula and I met on Friday, what we're working on is, um, a template for policies for the town, right? Um, and we're in the early stages, but we think we have an approved template, it's not gonna change content for existing, but there's a whole review process, right? Um, the reason I'm bringing it up here is because it's gonna impact clearly the departments, right? So we're working on a schedule and this is gonna be a long, uh, long project, probably the year, to get everything kind of done and in place. But in a couple of weeks, you'll probably see an email requesting a list of the policies that you already have in place. Um, and we're gonna differentiate between internal policy and what, because there's, you know, particularly for police and, and fire, there's internal policies that don't impact the town, right? Um, but you'll probably see that from Susan in about two weeks. Um, so what we wanna do is just get a gauge for policies that people are using, and if there's conflict with H R, things like that. And then, um, yeah, so, um, once we kinda come up with a more solid plan, you'll see policies for review if it impacts your department. Okay, if it's purely internal, you know, that's one thing, but if it's impacting any other department in the town or clearly select board, then it has to be reviewed and approved and, and all of. or clearly select board, then it has to be reviewed and approved and, and all of that, so we're just starting, we're in the very early stages of that, and it's, it's gonna be a, a lot of all, try to get us kinda standardized so people know what to expect. We're gonna have them numbered and.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna number them.
All of them are gonna be in the same, so we might have to like retype some of them or just set them up differently. Yep. But we want them all in the same format, right?
We're, we're redoing a lot and we're gonna be documenting a lot.
Yeah.
A lot, a lot.
Okay.
Cause it's not a lot of documentation.
Yeah.
Before I implement anything, do you guys want an opportunity to look at it, or can I implement it even if it's on a temporary basis before it's permanent?
I think you need to bring it before the board, for them to, you, you bring a proposal for implementation and then the board would usually, uh, re- review and authorize that to become essentially the law of the land or what, what you're operating under.
Can, the only diff- yes, but can we implement, I, the way that I typically like to do things is I like to do something that's a little bit broader out there, we start to use it and then refine it, and before it becomes an actual, um, formal documented process. Would, is that what you'd want?
With, with the, with the lack of policy and procedure that's actually in effect in your division, you kinda have some latitude to implement what you need to work right now, and then as you figure out what works, you wanna submit a policy that you.
Yeah, as we're making it kinda an actual peak for the department, it would come in front of you guys.
And one of the first policies that we'll do is a policy on policy, like how, who, who has to review it, you know, that kind of stuff, so that way we'd answer those questions. Because clearly there's some stuff that probably does not have to be reviewed, and then there'll be a list, a longer list of everything that has to be reviewed and approved, so.
We, we.
And, and that's, you're, you're gonna, you don't have a department head, like, the fire chief has, we don't review the fire chief's policies on fire operations, we don't review the police chief's. You.
Everything that we do interact.
You don't have a department head, so we are your department.
Exactly, so we would have some of them.
We do.
Yeah.
I just need to get some stuff.
Yep.
In place, and we're gonna start documenting some of that stuff internally, we'll, again, the same as routine.
Okay.
You guys are interested in seeing what we're doing? Invite you into the team and you can see what's happening and see if it works, see if you have input. I'm listening.
All right.
One more thing, and I think probably because I need input, um, so Kingston Days is requesting to be able to, some sponsors wanna hang banners for the gazebo. Yeah, for a fee, um, so it would be a fundraising, you know, two hundred and fifty bucks or, or whatever. Um, and the thought is to use, you know, there's clearly hooks or grommets for the, um, bunting that's hanging up there, to use that, so this is, uh, affects a lot of people and everyone's gonna have an opinion, so I figured I would bring it.
I don't know, I don't, I don't even know if I want to think on that.
Well, for Kingston Days, so it'd just be for the event.
For the weekend?
Yes, from Friday through Sunday.
Can I ask a dumb question, well, it could be, isn't the gazebo kinda blocked from the carnival?
It, it, it is, but some, some, um, potential sponsors still think that would be a great place for advertising. But you're right, that's where the carnival is, so that would be great, filled with that. So, comments, like, concerns, I, I.
I mean, I think there are better places for science than, than, than on that historic structure that we spent a lot of money and time, uh, to, to get right and get it fixed, and I mean, I, I could see it as a revenue generator though, and, you know, I mean, in our, in our position here now, I mean, that could be tempting, but, but I, I'd prefer not to do that.
I mean, as opposed to doing something like that, you could always put out, that, that's put on the snow fence or something like that, cause typically a snow fence around the whole plains.
Not for Kingston Days. No, I mean, I mean, these, these vendors are prob- they're probably thinking of the photo opportunity of, of their, their business on there, which
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I would, I would say my initial reaction would be, no, same reason, we don't offer sponsorships on the police cars and the fire trucks and it should be great for.
I, I was actually. I was next.
Yeah.
I think you're all of that, but was it to put signs on the dance floor?
Yes.
I, I'd like to register, um, disagreement with that.
Roger that.
I think they'd be better off getting a booth and putting a, you know, a template sign on a template booth and having that on the entire weekend than on the gazebo, to be honest with you.
And we, we would welcome them to stand out in front of the gazebo and take a photo with their banner before it's placed somewhere else.
Or on the, we call it the street, it's like plaques and golden.
Yeah.
And, and are, you said that we're already fasteners for.
I, I don't know how the bunting is hung up, I'm, I'm assuming that there's probably like hooks and grommets up there, I don't think they're kneeling in the bunting that's in the gazebo.
Right, but my question is, or comment would be, um, do we have the bunting up there all the time, uh, like through Kingston Days?
Uh, I defer to our head bunting installed.
Yeah, we'll just put it up there and, uh, before Memorial Day, and then usually go to, uh, Labor Day.
Oh, okay, so.
Which is that?
Which is, which is.
No, no, you go through Veterans Day.
This year, you go, you go for Veterans Day this year.
This year, we're going to Veterans Day, um, okay.
But there are, there are courts on each of the corners of the.
The point, the point is that the bunting is up there for a while now.
Right.
And so, even, even if the consensus was to put other stuff up there, those, those fasteners are being occupied with other, with bunting.
So it sounds like there's not much interest in.
Got it, I will take, I will take that, thanks for the.
They have a better shot of putting something in a fire truck.
What about electronic sign in front of the fire?
Now we're getting shaken off again.
Great, thank you.
All right, anything else, Mike?
No, well, I do, but it can wait till after.
All right, I guess we'll jump into Phil's presentation.
Yep. Adam, you wanna pull that up there? Well, Melissa, were you gonna stay for this? You were not.
Uh, yeah.
I told him a half hour, so probably forty-five minutes.
Okay.
Yeah. Wait, oh, you guys were gonna talk about.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's.
Oh, the CTAP.
I need to ask him to move that.
So, these two are coming out of work?
These are bunches.
That's gonna be my biggest question with the board.
Yes.
No, really, they were, they were fantastic.
Yeah, I, I am sure.
Oh, did you? Okay. Okay, oh, that's why I was saying, okay.
Hey, Phil, we're just gonna hold off on one thing real quick, we just, we need to address something else.
The vice president's guy, the, I don't know, he was connected and it was a survey for the faulty install.
We moved him.
Uh, yeah, you're not. And then we ran it, there was nothing. No, they were great, so.
Hey, everyone, quickly, we're just gonna take up the, uh, the CTAP item on the agenda before we get into the presentation. Susan is.
Oh. I'll take a note, I'll push it, can I do that?
Um, we'll just, we'll just give Susan a moment to return, yeah. She shouldn't be long.
Thank you.
Susan, we're just gonna take the CTAP out of her, just so that she doesn't have to stay with Phil's presentation.
Not that Phil's presentation won't be exhilarating, however. You're missing out.
Give me the, uh.
Okay, so, so we're moving this one item under old business up.
Yep.
Uh, to now the, the CTAP coaching and technical assistance, this, I brought it up to you at our last meeting, uh, the decision was that, uh, if I should get more information, come back to the board, perhaps identify a potential project if we had one that we could target.
Yep.
And so, just to refresh your memory, this is a, a pilot program that's being offered by the municipal association where they will pair up a coach with a town, uh, to help identify funding sources and help with developing narrative, uh, for applying for grant money, the grant money could be federal, could be state, could be nonprofit, or whatever. My thought is that with a lot of the federal money out there right now, uh, you know, there might be some opportunity there for us. So, uh, if, the other thing that the board had a concern about was that if we did this, did we, obviously someone in the town is gonna have to be a contact point, do we have the resources?
Yeah.
Right, okay, so, even if we apply for this and there's no cost to do it, and it's a one-page application, it's very simple, it's due July fifth, so, we won't meet again until after the deadline, so if it's something that we want to do, I, we'd have to do it now. The, um, so, in thinking about projects, um, I have been, while, while I was the liaison to the library, I started talking with Melissa about a grant that, uh, she's gonna be seeking through the community development finance authority. And I have some experience with that agency, and so we were talking about that. I've continued talking with her, Ellie, even since you've taken over past that, just to, uh, and I've, I've offered to help and view some narrative and give some comments and just to be a sounding board for, for some of that. So we happened to be chatting about it the other day, and I mentioned the CTAP program, and I thought, well, maybe there's an opportunity there for some of the work that Melissa's anticipating, and it could be tied in with perhaps that CDFA grant opportunity, so, um, if you all were comfortable with it, um, the part of the project that Melissa was talking about this morning, that retractable roof, pergola kind of thing,
Oh, right.
Uh, which would be targeted more for a senior kind of place, might be a, a, a nice carved out portion of that overall project that could dovetail nicely with what she's looking for for CDFA, and, uh, you know, whether or not there's any funding for that, who knows, but, you know, if there's an opportunity for us to get some assistance to perhaps look at it and see if there is some funding, and, and in this particular case, if we did that, um, Melissa would be the contact point, uh, for this, because she's the one putting this all together, so.
Which is why Melissa mentioned, I'm sorry, Melissa mentioned her report that we would need to send a letter of support.
Oh, well, actually, that's not just for this, um, for the other, like, for the CDFA grant, there's, there's gonna be, need to be a letter of support, uh, for that, but there probably would be one for this too, if, if another funding source were identified.
Yeah, and I, I, like I said, I have no problem with it, I just, I, I know we just saw a chance, we just don't wanna open us up to a thing that requires dumping additional work, and, and then, you know, some of these grants, I don't know, some of the federal grants that I have to manage, we actually get an administration fee, like, we have pastor grants at the county that I have to administer for some other law enforcement agencies, but we actually get to take a portion of that grant money and cover our administrative costs, so there are some potential upsides here and there, but, yeah, as long as, as long as we don't anticipate this being too invasive, that we're gonna be like, now we've shouldered this task that we have to put the burden on somebody else, I, I don't mind us moving forward, and if this is the opportunity for us to kinda see how that would work, this seems like it may be.
And this would also be, I, I hate to, but it would also be under the board of trustees of the, of the library, but with support for.
Yeah, right.
It, it, it kinda gets the right buttons with that respect.
So, would you be, who has to fill out this initial application, it'd be the board, but are you, do you have the time and ability to do that prior to the fifth?
I, I was planning on submitting it as long as the board is comfortable with it, and as, and as long as Melissa agrees to it, and, um, and I'll just submit it and, um, I'll make sure that Melissa's copied on it, and we'll see what happens, we'll see if they select us, they're gonna be selecting ten communities around the state of, in different population ranges. The other thing is that they, they will, municipal association will be giving preference to communities that have, uh, I, I'm gonna call it, that they have a higher level of distress, perhaps, than Kingston does with regard to, uh, income levels and that sort of thing, so if it came down to, you know, uh, comparing one to another during Kingston, to say, a project in another community, uh, the other community might, might, you know, just for, just for demographic reasons alone, um, but we don't know what the, what the level of interest is gonna be in this program, they might not have a high level of interest, and it might be an opportunity for us just to grab a little bit of extra.
If we don't apply, they'll never know.
Exactly, so, so you're gonna, just, so I understand, you're gonna apply to that using this project as, because they said it's better.
You have, you, you.
Better likelihood, right, if you have.
You're supposed to identify a project.
And even though we're still going for a grant from the community development.
Right.
Right, we can still use that, but this will provide assistance.
Right, and actually, part of the application is, uh, when you talk about the project, you have to talk about other sources of funding that you're also seeking, so it, it dovetails very well with this.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause the pavilion may cost two hundred and fifty thousand, so if you can get a hundred and fifty in grants, you're only going to the public for a hundred thousand down the road, so it, it makes sense to progress accordingly.
Plus, the project at the library is much more than just a pavilion, I mean, there are, there are trails and there are other.
Yeah, there's so much, so I suspect we'll be going after several grants over the next few years.
And the fact that we're in an age-friendly community, planning processes, well, all this ties in very nicely to.
All ties in.
We think it's perfect.
So, so because, because it's a grant nexus, we probably have to take a formal vote on it for the application, or do you, with this program, this program, just cause it's a, a tie-in and it's not the official grant?
This is not a grant, this is just a technical assistance, but, but, I mean, it wouldn't be bad, I mean, we probably should have.
I think you should, and then a copy of the grant should be part of our record.
Yeah. But it's, but, this is not.
No, this is just the assist, the assistance application, it's just technical assistance to help identify the grant.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, well, I mean, yeah, I, I, I feel more, I must be, just because it's tied to grant funding, I'd always like there to be a motion with it.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion, um, to authorize, oh, me?
I would say you in this situation, yes, cause you're gonna, you're, cause, because we're not meeting again before then.
Okay, uh, to authorize me to apply for the New Hampshire Municipal Association's Coaching and Technical Assistance Program, otherwise known as CTAP, C-T-A-P, uh, on behalf of, uh, a project at the Kingston Community Library.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa.
For your support, I appreciate it. See ya, have a good week.
All right, Phil, there you go.
Sorry, Phil.
She's not.
She's not. Oh my god, are you in a, like, a movie theater?
Front row, where's the seat now?
Can't do that, it is the worst seat in the house.
Adam, you wanna mute us? I am muted. Am I talking for you or?
No, oh, no, let's.
Okay.
I can't, you, because the sound over there, I, I apologize.
Oh, that's fine.
I'm just signed in so that I can have a, it's very special. Oh, another passenger? Oh, the Wi-Fi, oh, no, that's, uh, I'm sorry. You're upset, sorry about that.
Perfect, oh, good, thank you.
Hey, Ryan, you there?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, Ryan, I have you here with the Kingston Select Board. We had a couple technical glitches after we finished our last meeting there, but Ryan is joining us from Utah, so this is awful early in the morning for him. But what I wanted to do is, there's multiple modules with this, so what Ryan and I had talked about is just having him go through, do about five minutes on each module, and then at the end, we'll do kind of a overview of the mapping software that comes with this. That's where a lot of the meat is. And then, just handle any questions or run through anything you guys would like to see again. Does that work? Okay. Ryan, I turn it over to your capable hands.
Perfect. Sounds good. Well, hey, I appreciate it. Allow me some time today. I guess just by way of introduction, my name is Ryan Bundy. I am the sales account executive here with Iwork Systems over at Public Works Software for the state of New Hampshire. I also do have, in the meeting with us, one of our sales managers and technical experts, Mike McKee. So, if there's anything too technical over my head, we may hear from Mike as well. So, allow me to, I guess, just kinda share my screen here. One thing that we kinda start with sometimes is just a little bit of a brief introduction as who we are as a company. So, let me run through this really quickly. This is just the list of a handful of the customers that we're currently working with in New Hampshire. I have provided a couple of actual contact references to Lisa and Phil there to speak with existing customers, but we've been in business for over twenty years, started in 2001 from the get-go. Our market focus has been on public works departments, and we really do anything and everything public works-related. When we were released in 2001, we were the very first web-based system on the market. And what that means for everyone today is it gives you easy access to the software from anywhere, unlike some server-based applications, you can only access, you know, from a computer in the office. With Iwork Systems, anywhere that you have an internet connection and a web browser, you can access and manipulate the software. It also makes everything very highly configurable, and I'll just run through a few examples of what we mean by that. But basically, we will be able to configure and customize the software just to fit and track the information that you find most useful, cleaning it up so it's not too overwhelming and cumbersome. We operate on an annual subscription model. With that, you get unlimited users, so we do not charge a per-seat license or anything like that. But more importantly, unlimited training and support. So, you know, we take the setup and implementation process very seriously, pulling in any historical data we can get from, you know, electronic format. Like I mentioned, building out and customizing the software to fit your needs, and of course, training everyone up on its use. Beyond that, you know, after the initial setup and implementation period, you know, anytime you need any additional training, if there's turnover within the city, whatever it might be, you send them our direction. We'll handle that as well as support is available to you at no additional cost for the life of the agreement. So, with that being said, let me just jump into the software here. Again, browser-based, Iwork.net is the URL. Every individual would have their own unique login and password. And I'm gonna start in work management, just because this is really the, you know, the kind of the meat and potato, the brains for the operation. Everything kinda ties back to work management. You can see that we can really customize our view here of what we're seeing. You know, right now, I'm looking at all of my work orders. You know, if I wanted to dial down and see, you know, maybe just work orders for my roads department, or, you know, even get a little bit more nitty-gritty and dial down and see, you know, let me look at just like a particular work type, you know, pothole work orders. Or if a guy wants to come in and say, hey, let me see just the work orders that are tied to me, you know, if you are assigning work orders to particular individuals, you know, here's Mike's open work order. So, a lot of customizability in our view here of what we're seeing from the main screen. Work orders, as you can tell, is really the main focus here. And there's a couple different ways to create work orders. We can create from scratch. Once we've got some work orders, you know, repetitive jobs in here, we can create some of... Excuse me. We can save some of those work orders as templates, which can save us some time instead of having to build from scratch every time we can work off of a template. The general navigation is very straightforward, you know, pretty intuitive. You'll notice we've got a handful of tabs across the top here that are pretty self-explanatory as well as a toolbar over on the right-hand side here to make changes if we need to. So, if we went and created a work order, all of the information that we're tracking across the top here, these general fields are completely customizable. And this is one thing that really sets us apart from a lot of the other, you know, competitors, if you will, that are other options that are in the marketplace. So, I wanna show you what I mean by customizable. Let me go back to my main screen. All of those fields are being pulled in from this field tab. So, if you ever needed to change what is being tracked on work orders, there's no need to have any coding knowledge or even to call us. Right on the fly, you can go in and change it in these fields. So, if there's, for example, anything here that you don't feel like you need to track in your city, you can basically just X out of those and get rid of them, and they're no longer gonna be tracked. If you wanted to add additional fields, we can do that here by adding additional text fields, numeric fields, lookup fields, or date fields. As an example of a lookup field, I'll go to this assigned department, see my values. These are all the department options that we've got built in. And again, you need to clean it up and get rid of any of those you can here, or add additional values there. So, a lot of customizability here in what can be tracked. If... I'll direct your attention over to the right-hand side here. If we are wanting to track costs on work orders, this is how we would pull in things like employees, equipment, material, inventory. I also do have, instead of going into each of these individually, I do have the ability to multi-select. So, you know, if I wanted to track, you know, who's working on a job and the number of hours that they've spent on it, equipment that was used, a material that was used, or inventory, this is where I would pull those things from. And if I can minimize that, again, go back over to my main screen, that's really what these next handful of tabs correspond to. You know, my employees, I'm logged in as an administrator, so I can really see, you know, all information. You know, rates, for example, is something that depending on the level of access that you give to each individual, you know, something that oftentimes is, can be hidden. Equipment, this is a pretty fascinating tab here. You know, I'm able to pull in particular pieces of equipment that I'm using on a job and track the costs associated with its use. But one thing that was of, you know, quite a bit of importance to both Phil and Sean when we pulled him in as far as equipment maintenance goes, you can see when I jump into one of these, not only am I tracking just what the vehicle is and essentially what it would cost to use it, but we can actually use this same tab to track our maintenance. So, you can see here that I have a maintenance history. I can upload files directly to this particular asset. You know, on here, we've got like photographs, and you can upload warranties, invoicing information, you name it. But I can also add additional maintenance. So, it can serve as a place to keep track of the vehicles themselves and their maintenance. Basic information here, you know, like mileage, work performance, comments, costs, those types of things.
Yeah. And so, this is not an individual module. This is part of the work order module, but we could see how effective this is if it's being utilized. And then, I believe the cutoff was where Ryan felt you'd need the other modules, that a hundred pieces of equipment. But right now, we have, you know, pieces of scrap paper, recall notice, all those things kinda floating around the office. This would allow everything for every specific vehicle to be tracked, and then if we auctioned it or anything like that, all that information would be right there to pass off to the next owner.
Absolutely. Great point. And yeah, like Phil mentioned, we see that around a hundred vehicles is about the time where a lot of communities will upgrade to a full-blown fleet management module that has some more functionality as far as like helping you with fleet replacement ratings, you know, coming up with algorithms and determining, is it time to sell this vehicle or should we continue to maintain it, you know, tracking additional items like fuel usage and things like that. But yeah, for the size of your fleet, I think this is definitely a huge upgrade as far as what's being done now to track your vehicle maintenance and use. So, I appreciate that additional feedback, Phil. And I appreciate you jumping in there. This always does go better if it's a conversation more than just, you know, standing on my sub-ops up here. So, thanks for jumping in. Any additional questions you have, please feel free to do so.
Yeah. And just one thing I wanna hit on, Ryan, is so you can see the FEMA codes category there. It is a huge undertaking for us, and we have to, when FEMA, like the Christmas Eve, Eve storm, where we had to get together all this information of all this stuff that was involved in that response. So, this would have all of that stuff preloaded and ready to input for when the state emergency management directorate or FEMA come to us and wanna know, hey, what'd you use for that? We can... This will cut it down to a fraction of the time we're spending getting that paperwork ready for them.
Absolutely. We'll get... I'll get to reports in just a moment here, you know, the means in which we're actually gonna pull that information out if we needed to on those FEMA codes. We'll talk about everything in reporting in just a moment. But I wanted to cover just a couple of these other tabs here in work management, you know, inventory being another one of those that seem to be, you know, of a lot of interest there, really being able to help you guys, you know, increase your efficiencies. So, I can, you know, just looking at my inventory list here, you can keep track of really anything and everything, even down to office supplies if you'd like to. I can customize my view here, kinda sort and filter based on where these are, this inventory is being stored, you know, if there are multiple warehouses throughout town kind of a thing. I can sort and filter based on my vendor, you know, where did I purchase this stuff from, if I wanna see, hey, what's everything that I bought from, you know, this interstate pipes and supply, for example, or just by category. So, if there's inventory that I wanna see that's just been used for, you know, maybe my roads department, or, you know, parks and rec, those types of things, I can sort and filter here as well. So, one of the really nice things is it's a first-in, first-out as far as pricing goes. So, you know, as prices start going up and up on things, you know, it's gonna use, you know, those items on a first-in, first-out. It also gives me the ability to create notification quantities. So, as an example, just the first one on this list here, I've got the tackage bolts. It shows we have quite a few of them on hand, a hundred and twenty-five. I was able to set a notification quantity at fifteen, so if we ever got below that, as I go pulling these in on work orders, it will notify me, hey, time to order more of those. We're running low based on what you input as a notification quantity. And then, if I actually open one of these up, I can see a history, you know, where have I used these, what work orders have they been attached to. I can open up that work order and see what was done with it from past history, as well as something that a lot of communities would really like to give, kind of a paper trail on who was pulling these pieces of inventory out and utilizing those.
Yeah. And I think this is something for us, you know, signs are something we're constantly trying to keep on hand to respond if something gets damaged, but keeping an active inventory of that, they're very expensive things, but they're small, they, you know, people just go in and grab one and put it up, and then we... This would allow us to track that a lot more effectively. Or the other thing is, we have a lot of repair parts for the plows that we need to keep track of, to keep an on-hand inventory. So, this would be another... That would be another, just kinda the high-dollar consumables that we're going through could be trapped in this. Glenn, did you have a question?
It was just a thought. I'm not sure if this is only... Software is only for things like equipment and property and that kind of thing, or whether or not it also has a component that could be used to tracking our MS4 requirements, such as catch bases and...
Yes. And that's on the mapping portion that's coming up.
Okay.
And I apologize, Phil. I couldn't make out that question, so I'm leaning on you.
Yeah. No, we'll get to that on the GIS portion.
Okay. Sounds good. So, just moving through some of these other tabs here real quickly, scheduling, you know, this will help really keep track of repetitive jobs. You can notice that there's a couple of color-coded indicators there. Looks like neither of those applied today, but if we had a job that was scheduled to be created today or something that was past due, these color-coded indicators that actually show up on our tab up here, without doubt, you know, even opening the tab, we'll be able to see, hey, we've got something that needs to be done. And then, these just work off of our templates. So, these are our existing list of templates. You know, if I have this mowing job that needs to be done today, I just click on this guy, and it would pull me into a template, so I wouldn't have to build from scratch. So, on to my reporting functionality. Anything and everything that has been input into the system can be pulled out in a report. This is an area where we oftentimes get just phenomenal feedback, especially from users that are coming from a different software, you know, comparing our reporting tool. It is very, very user-friendly and also super-powerful. You can see that we have headings here for different report types, so we can pull work order reports, employee reports, equipment reports, or inventory reports. Then, there are also kind of some subheadings within each of these. I wanna show you how simple it is just to create a report from scratch. So, if I just go in and build one of these guys, it's ad hoc reporting, so on the fly, it's kinda like a buffet, you can pick and choose what you want to be on that report. And we do it just simply by, you know, kinda clicking on these plus buttons over here. So, if I pull in work order number, date, status, work type, maybe my employee hours and costs, equipment amount and costs, maybe inventory and amount and cost as well, just picking some of these at random. I can further customize the report by choosing any of these, to group it by any of these fields. But if I just go ahead and hit run, it'll give me the ability to choose my date range. If I ever needed it, if it was financial information that I was pulling out that I needed to put into the city's financial software, I do have access to it, a dot CSV file here. But let me just go ahead and hit run, and with a matter of seconds, I've got a full-blown report, so I can pull this, three pages of information. These are the... These columns are what I chose to be on that customized report. I've got totals at the bottom here, and also the ability to export as an Excel, PDF, or Word. So, going back to what we've talked about with, you know, those FEMA codes and costs, you know, this is an example of how quick and simple it is to build a completely customized report. Now, if there's reports that we are pulling kind of on the regular, instead of having to go in, even though that was very simple to build from scratch, we also do down at the bottom here, have saved reports. So, you know, like Mike's monthly report here, I don't have to go in and build it, I can just hit run, choose my date range, and we're off to the races, so. A very, very powerful reporting tool there. Any questions on that or comments on that, Phil?
Nope.
That's perfect. Well, I'm gonna get into next here, the mapping functionality, and we can touch on this a little bit later when we do peek at both the stormwater and facilities modules that we've got you quoted out on. But just to kinda hit on how this ties into my work management. So, this is Pacific Grove, California, longstanding customer. I'm gonna use maybe my catch basin layer as the example, just 'cause I know that that is something that you guys... It sounds like from my notes here that you have mapped in GIS. So, these are, you know, all of my existing assets here. Let me just scroll or zoom in here and click on one of these guys, so maybe I'll just go to this one on the corner of Nineteenth Lighthouse. So, the benefit of having these in our work management system is because directly from the map, you know, basically out in the field or in the office, I can interact with these assets. You know, if I'm driving my roads and I notice something's going on here, maybe this one's plugged or something's up with it, I can actually view that asset directly. I can see all the attribute data related to it, you know, just like some of the other areas that we talked about, you can upload files, you know, there's an actual picture of this asset. I can look at past inspections, what my future scheduled inspections look like on this, as well as a maintenance history. So, and if I ever needed to go into one of these past inspections, you know, I can look at that as well. And that is a good segue into what it looks like on my inspection dashboard. We can build out any of these customized inspections with any of the items that you want to view on that particular asset there. And if you allow me, I'll go back to my map here. If there are other assets that you do not have mapped out currently, you know, this does give you the ability to start mapping them. So, even if you don't have them now in a GIS system, you know, for example, let me go to like my sign layer. To... Oop, I meant... Ooh, signs down here, not there. So, again, you can see that on this demo map, we do have a lot of our signs mapped out. But let me go to a part of town here that we don't have that mapped and show you how simple it is to start mapping some of them. So, maybe you're in the office and you have, you know, a document that... So maybe you're in the office and you have, you know, a document that has a list of all your sign assets or any others that we're referring to, or maybe you have a paper map, you know, a lot of different scenarios there. And I know that there's a sign here on the corner of Wainwright and High Street. I can drop a pin and add a point to the map and create a new sign directly from the map. Again, if I know my MDT CD code, I can pop that in here. It'll pre-fill a lot of this information. In a different scenario, if I'm out in the field on a device that has location services, like a phone or a tablet, you know, I can ping my current location if I'm standing right next to that sign and add it to the map that way. So quite a bit of functionality there as far as utilizing existing GIS data and also building out an asset map if it's something that you do not already have in place. So any, any specific questions or anything else that you would like me to highlight when it comes to the mapping functionality, Phil?
Well, I'm just going to expound on that. So the catch basins are a great example. So once a year, we have to have a contractor come in and clean the catch basins as per our MS four requirements. So because there is no software licensing fee, I can give them access to the program so they can go on there and have that on their phone and find every catch basin in Kingston that we have mapped. If they're unable to find it or there's some issue with it or any notes they want to add, they can upload directly into the program. And so we would, we could generate a report of any issues that they locate. But we're also putting catch basins in all the time as we find these runoff areas and everything. So that would allow our guys on the ground to just utilize their phones, stand on that point, drop a pin on it, and then we would have that information uploaded there. So we wouldn't constantly have to be paying an engineering firm to keep adding these things in there. We would be tracking all of any of those additions or catch basins that we decommissioned. So, and you can just extrapolate that out to any part of road infrastructure, like signage. We're responsible for making sure that the signs have a certain amount of luminosity. If something hasn't been replaced in thirty-five years, we're tracking that. We've got all the ones in there, so we can generate a list of what needs to be upgraded eventually, and it helps us for budgeting purposes. Do you want to get on the roads part of that as well, Ryan?
Sure, yeah. So let me switch gears here. You know, one of the, one of the pieces of packs that we put together for you was the pavement management. So this is a very powerful tool in, you know, helping you. You can see here, there's a budgeting tool to help you, you know, build out your budgets for road repairs. Kind of come at it from a couple of different angles, you know, depending on how you guys manage things there. You know, I think we kind of talked about in the past, you know, maybe you're going to the select board and saying, hey, here's the roads that I need to get repaired, you know, based on information that I've got in my software. Here's how much it's going to take to repair those roads and how that's supposed to be a dollar amount in mind. Or, you know, we also run into a handful of communities that will just say, you know, coming from the difference, different angle, this is how much they're giving me, what roads am I going to be best served in repairing this year or in the next five years, or those types of things. So, yeah, there is a mapping functionality tied directly to that pavement management portion of things as well. You know, tracking my center line miles. And really similar to what I showed you on those catch basins, you know, I can click on any of these particular road segments, you know, add work orders directly to it, view past, you know, history of, been done on it, my current ratings and whatnot.
And so what this would allow us to do is currently, we really don't have much of a mechanism tracking when things were last paved other than people's memories. So what we discussed in the presentation as far as the pavement maintenance management, utilizing different techniques such as crack sealing, bog sealing, chip seals, things like that, we could track all that here. So we would, eventually the goal would be to develop an ongoing schedule for maintenance of all the roads by geographical area. And that would be how we would track that. The other thing this would allow us to do is designate certain areas into a plow route. So right now, we have written what is the plow route. And if we've got a new guy, I'm basically going to be sitting with him for three or four runs, explaining where this street is and that street is and running him through everything. What this would allow us to do is again, the user would be able to log on there and it would be noted which streets are what. And it would just come up on a Google map, here's the route you need to plow. And so that would allow us the freedom to, it'd free me up. Rather than sitting there trying to answer phone or address problems while I'm locked in the cab with him, this would allow me to be in the truck and out taking care of those problems and he can have a visual representation of what the plow route is. So there's a lot of data tied to these roads, you know, footages, widths, number of structures in there that the paving contractor needs to know about when they generate pricing for us. If we can get this all inputted, we can generate these lists very quickly and get our long-term plan as far as maintenance mapped out for the next ten years. So that gives us the ability to have everything kind of in one spot.
You can see here, we only have, in this demo site, two routes, but, you know, it gives you an idea of exactly what Phil was referring to as far as building out. We've got a color by lookup function so we can see, you know, what roads are on what route, so.
We have not a guess.
Good, good. All right. So moving along here, I think probably the next thing that I will hit on would be, since we got you quoted out on that stormwater, just to kind of show you a little bit more what that, what this looks like. No, well, actually, I'll hit permits first. We, I know that you mentioned MS four, you know, issuing like SWIP permits. There is a permitting module that is built into our stormwater package here. So it allows you to track and create those permits. But it also gives us the ability to create customized inspections. That I wanted to see there. Two stormwater assets, here we go. So, you know, this is an all-view of all my stormwater assets. You know, right now, we only have catch basins in there, but we can track really anything and everything in your stormwater system. Inlets, outfalls, you name it. And again, if, for those assets that we already have in the GIS system, GIS system, excuse me, we'll be able to pull those layers in and then help you to continue to build out any infrastructure that is lacking or missing in there. But again, I mentioned kind of being able to create customized inspections. Here's an example, you know, in this one, we've got it set up just kind of on a pass fail system with different things to check, the ability to upload notes, upload files, if you want to, pictures, those types of things. Set up maintenance schedules. You know, you can see there's a lot of these that are in red, so you can kind of color-code them, letting us know if they're past due. And then also pull in and create customized reports on the work that's been done, when expensed, those types of things. So a lot of functionality here in our stormwater package as well.
And with regards to our permit, we are removing things that we have to have on our periodic inspection as far as dry weather and wet weather inspection, because the permit is only concerned with things that continue downstream. So we have numerous catch basins and outfalls that don't go anywhere. And we've been slowly working down those numbers to, I think we have twenty-seven or thirty-seven active outfalls out of the two-hundred and something catch basins and outfalls in town. So this is where we would track that. And then eventually, this would give us some savings on, because we just do a blanket cleaning of every catch basin in town each year. I think if we were able to present to the EPA that every other year, we're going to do these ones and we have a solid way of tracking that, it would be better for the catch basins because it's kind of overdoing it at the moment. It's kind of undermining them. So this would give us the ability to have a solid plan, present that, and they would sign off on that. But it's just been easier to just do all of them all at once, because we really had no other way of tracking it. Back to you, Ryan.
Good deal. Okay. So the next one I'll jump to is the facility management module. And again, of course, you've noticed that all through these different modules, you know, navigation is really, really similar, so you're not having to like relearn for each module how to use it. Navigation with these tabs across the top and again, toolbar over on the right-hand side here. So in my facility management module, again, I can kind of customize my view here. Right now, I'm looking at an all-view. I can dial down and say, okay, for example, let me just look at all my HVAC units across all my different facilities or, you know, all my generators across all my different facilities. I can set up inspection dashboards for each of those sub-assets with customized maintenance schedules and inspections for each of those. Back to my all-view here. If I go into one of these here, let me use like maybe this library as an example. I would be able to see on this particular building, you know, past inspections that were done, my future scheduled inspections, and again, all the assets that are linked to that one. So this particular building, we've only got a generator and HVAC system in it. But as you can see on that previous page here, we can set up, these are just some examples, you know, electrical restrooms, you know, anything that needs to be maintained there. And then one really neat feature of this package is it comes with a portal where all of your users have the ability to submit to your public works team, any work that needs to be done. So there's an online portal here. If you go to it, my facilities portal. And of course, we would customize this, you know, when your city is Crest or Letterhead, it wouldn't just say city of somewhere there. But they can actually input requests. So we can customize this. You can see here, anything with an asterisk indicates that it has to be filled in before they can submit. You know, we've got a mix there. Some things have to be in, some things that don't. But it's a good way for users to be able to notify you, you know, hey, the doorknob on this, on this particular room is broken or whatever it might be. Light bulb out, you name it. But a really quick and simple way for anybody using the facility to notify you of work that needs to be done on those. And those would just come into a module where you can kind of review it and then export it as a work order into my facilities management module and get that job completed.
So what this would allow us to do is
Sorry, go ahead.
Standardize it for if Tammy has something she'd like done in her office or Paula does or the museum or the fire department, they can submit a help ticket. It would be reviewed and then go onto the work order process and it would give everybody one place to go versus telling Tom or John or me or calling Lisa. It would just be one avenue for people to utilize for help with facilities, any facilities request.
So how do they do that?
So they would go to the city of somewhere webpage and do this stuff.
And they do that and submit a work request?
Yep, yep. And so that way, nothing gets lost in the shuffle. It stays on the work order page until it's completed, and then we can.
Is there a way if someone sends an email that you can just automatically convert it to a work request? Or are you going to have to, because there's going to be people who will not use that and still send you an email or something?
The goal will be to channel everybody through there.
Okay, okay. But if not, you would have to manually answer it for them?
Ryan, you get that one?
I did not, I'm sorry.
So if we get an email for a request, can that be, can that feed a facilities request or does that have to be entered by hand?
Yeah, great question. So if we're, if you're not receiving the request through the facilities portal, so if somebody just emails you, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yeah, so in that case, that would be something that you would just input by hand. Well, you would essentially, you know, create a work order based on the email. The only way that those, that information we pulled in and mapped to the software is if they used the portal here and filled out those fields. Otherwise, it would be just a manual process of you taking information from the email and building out a work order here on your own.
But we can attach the email as part of the file?
Oh, absolutely. Yep, yep. You can always upload any documents to a work order, you know, if you wanted to keep that as a reference, you bet. And, you know, in that regard, you know, if I go back to my work management here, you know, on a work order, we do have the ability to, you know, one of the fields that we've got in here is keeping track of, you know, where the request came from. If it was the internal request, citizen request, you can keep track of the requester's name and contact information. So if it came through in different means than the portal, you still can track in this heading here where that came from and then maybe get back to the person if you'd like to when the job is complete. Now, otherwise, if you can push everything to the portal, there is the means of them looking up past requests. So if they, you know, like when they submit one of these, it's going to give them a request number. You know, they can search for that request number and get updates that way on, you know, they're waiting on supplies or is the job completed, those types of things. So it is definitely best to push them in this direction, but yeah, but otherwise, we still do have the means of tracking that information if it just came into an email and you were manually inputting it.
And there is also a benefit, you guys, to them using the portal. So if you guys make a change to the work order request, like you change the status from pending to open or you guys message them, they will get a notification to their email if you want it set up that way where they will be notified that you guys are working on that project. So it should alleviate some issues of people calling you to ask if you started the job yet.
Thanks for that, Mike.
Thank you.
So any other specific questions? You know, that really is, we've gone through pretty much everything that was included on the package that we built out. So work management, sign management, pavement management, stormwater management with permits and the facilities management package with the internal request portal. Phil, did you want us to go through the proposal with pricing or is that something you've already done with them? What are your thoughts there?
I think we went into it briefly. I don't know if there's more questions from the board or?
Could you just review it quickly?
Sure. Do you mind pulling that up, Ryan?
Of course. You bet. I can do that. So, so yeah, everything that we've kind of gone through, we've got outlined here. So that public works basic package is what included the work management and sign management and the pavement management. We've got some discounts on here, marked it to four thousand annually. The stormwater package with that permit module included twenty-five hundred dollars annually. And then the facilities management package with the internal facilities request at twenty-five hundred as well. So with the discounts we've got on here, it's got you at nine thousand annually. And then there is the one-time setup and implementation fee. We had it at five thousand, however, just this month, I let Phil and Lisa know that we had a meeting with our management team and just being that our summer months are kind of some of our slower months to give an incentive for some of our potential customers and signing on before the end of our quarter two, which is this Friday, they're offering half off the setup. So we've got it down to twenty-five hundred instead of the five thousand. So year one would be eleven-five and if we can get that signed agreement by the end of the month here. And then years two, three, and so on down the road, nine thousand annually.
Could you make that bigger?
Can you zoom in on that a little bit, Ryan?
We just need it to be bigger.
Yeah, let's see here.
Eleven-five first year and then nine thousand each year thereafter. I'm wondering how long that nine thousand per year is held and when, at what point does that become a variable?
So the question about when, how long will the nine thousand number be good for, Ryan? Just for budget planning?
Yep, you bet. So let me scroll up here. So right now, it is built into the agreement that it can increase up to five percent per year. However, with that being said, in the over twenty years of doing business, we have, we've actually never increased costs for an existing customer. So it's kind of an odd answer to that. We can increase it by five percent per year. We, to date, we never have. You know, we make a lot of investments and updates and enhancements to our software throughout the year, you know, constantly updating things. You know, and constantly updating things. Um, and, and frankly, up to this point, the way that we've been able to pay for a lot of those updates and enhancements is year over year, um, our pricing sheet for new customers does go up. So, you know, if something were to, to happen and we just couldn't make it work this year, but you ended up signing up next year, you know, these, these numbers would be a, a bit different. They do go up a bit. Um, but, but so far, you know, to date, in over twenty years of doing business, we, we've actually never increased them for existing customers.
Scroll down, can you scroll down just a little bit? There, oh.
Roll down to what, I'm sorry?
Oh.
Which, which part?
Well, the termination part. We wanted to see section seven, termination.
Section seven.
And I apologize, I'm, 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 oh, section seven. Sorry, I, I, I can tell when someone's talking in the background.
Stop, oh.
Okay, stop, right, 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 right. After the initial three-year term.
Either, either party may terminate this agreement after the initial three-year term. So there's a three-year term initially.
Yes. Yup, that's what we're signing on for is, is some, the nine thousand is guaranteed for the first, well, after the initial fee. And then we have two years guaranteed.
At nine thousand a year?
Correct.
So the first year's whatever it is.
Eleven-five.
Year two and three are both nine thousand.
Correct.
After that, we could re-sign on?
Yup.
Well, it's not, it's not a guaranteed nine thousand. It could be up to five percent more.
Well, we could.
And, and after that, you guys, you go year to year. So, and you guys, you know, you're, you're not gonna be locked in for the additional periods. If you want to lock in again, you can. Uh, but kind of to, to Ryan's point there, we haven't yet done any increases. And to be honest, if you, if, if it ever happened, you can always give us a call, see if there's anything we can do. So we're always willing to work with our, especially for our customers, you know, do everything we can to keep you.
What's that during the term of the agreement, there was a cost to get the customer's data? What does that mean? Of the twenty-five hundred dollars?
Uh, can we go back up to the?
Section seven?
Section seven.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
No problem.
The, the last sentence.
If you want me to touch on that, Ryan, I can.
Oh, yes, sorry, I, I didn't hear the question. Go ahead.
Yeah, so in that last sentence, during the term of the agreement, customer requests a copy of all customer's data for a cost no more than twenty-five hundred. That's not saying it will be twenty-five hundred. What that is referring to, so if you go up, um, go a little slower for me, yup. So number four, customer can run reports and export data out of iWork and their applications at any time for no cost. So what that sentence is referring to, um, it kind of happened because of one of our existing customers. They were asking us to run a report for them every single month for about a year. And it wasn't this report. They were asking us to download every single file, every single thing we had at the end of the month and give it back to them every month. Turned out that they were actually just leaving iWork and they want to get all their data, which is great, that, that's fine. Um, but when you guys leave iWork, so number one, you guys can pull this data out anytime. But now if you go back to down to number seven, again.
Oops, sorry, skipped it.
No, you're good. Um, right there, upon termination, right where his mouse, oh, that's, yeah, right there. Upon termination, iWork will discontinue the applications and we will provide the customer with electronic copy of all of your data and, of within three to five business days. That is for free. So we don't charge you for that. It's if during the term, if you're asking us to send you all these backups, because it is taking our guys hours and hours each day, um, I guess it really depends on which data you have in there, um, to kind of build that out. Does that make sense?
Yup, yup.
So you guys can run that report out by yourself, or in the event that you guys leave iWork, we're gonna give it to you anyway. So that's just for us to do it during the term, if you guys are, keep asking for it.
Thank you.
So the data is hosted at iWork?
It is hosted through Amazon Web Services GovCloud.
Yup.
Okay. Anybody else?
And just so you know too, on Amazon Web Services GovCloud, I always like to highlight this key point. Um, iWork, we do backups twice per week and we do off-site backups twice per week. So in our twenty-two years, we've actually never lost anyone's data before.
Alrighty. Alright, gentlemen, I think that's all the time we have, but, um, I will definitely be in contact with you and I appreciate the time.
Excellent. Well, hey, we, we appreciate, uh, you allowing us to, to join you there and we'll, we'll talk again soon. Take care.
And I do have one last thing to say there.
Oh, yes.
Um, because those discounts are tied back to, to this Friday, um, if we don't hear from you, let's say Wednesday or, or Thursday, can we give you a call back?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, that sounds good. We'll make that a plan.
Alright, we'll get back to it. Thanks again. Take care.
Alright, thanks, guys. Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you. So obviously, this isn't a budgeted item.
Correct.
This is something, I mean, my personal opinion is this is an item that would be appropriate for ARPA funding and for multiple reasons. Because in order to enter into a multi-year contract, it would give us time to prepare for future budgeting if this is a road that we went down. Um, and obviously, because even if we could find money somewhere, which we have to find money for other stuff, we couldn't enter into the contract without using the ARPA fund, I don't think. Because we say in our sales are for failure for budgeting process. Uh, just other caveat to that is because that multi-year contract totals more than twenty-five thousand dollars, we would have to put it out to RFP. What is our, so I'm obviously more familiar with the RFP process at the county level, which is bound by statute. At the town, we kind of set our own, we set our determination for RFP. Do we as a board, if there's a particular product, do we have the ability to waiver it? And in the past, what has been the towns, you know, what have been the situations that they've waited? I mean, obviously, in like sole source provider, I mean.
Where is it, where is it written that our, our thing is twenty-five K?
In our policies and procedures that we subject all the department heads to.
I could get it just now. Because it might, there might be a line in there that says at the discretion of the board, we can do whatever.
Well, ge- generally speaking, like the board would have the opportunity to waive it, um, and, and other situations that I've dealt with. But I just, I don't, I don't know how, how, you know, what the board's take has been on it traditionally.
Certain things are considered professional services and they aren't legal for kids, but we have anyway, if you ask, so.
So just to some, uh, some background on this, um, the previous chair of the select board had wanted everybody to kind of research the software because the ARPA funds were kind of sunsetting. Um, we looked at five, six different softwares. There was only one other that we got a quote from because the other ones just didn't have the functionality that we were looking for. Either too complex or just, you read off the bat, they were way too expensive. Um, this was the lowest priced option that we could find. There was another one out of, uh, actually Cambridge that was like the Cadillac. And I, I did include some of the pages, at least the final quote numbers from that, but each one was thirteen pages for each module. So I didn't record you for that, but great software, but probably was not in our price range. So we did look at multiple vendors, there were two that we got quotes from. And, and it's kind of hard because it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. You know, however they set up the modules, or whether support is tied to that, to data and all those things. So, uh, this one was more than half the cost of the other comparable vendor that we, we found. And, and I understand even despite our much, I mean, there's just been a lot of kicking these type of projects that can's been kicked down the road for years and years and years of getting, and I, I'm glad you brought up that, you know, that I think it's important for the MS four stuff. Because being able to track and, you know, print out that data and then, you know, you touched on, you know, when you have a FEMA event, uh, yeah, all the backlog of information that you have to try and document to get coverage for that is just incredibly voluminous. Um, I, I mean, you're the person that's gonna be using this. We just, I mean, obviously, you're advocating for this because you think it's something that is more beneficial to your department and the town in general. I, I, I think it's one of those things, we have the paper backups in place, but the, the amount of time involved in, in getting the data and making it usable is just, it, it doesn't make sense. Whereas this just makes it accessible to anyone on the team to pull up. And, and we can control the data that they're allowed, like the stormwater guys will only have access to the stormwater catch base and information. They can't go in and change things about the signs or anything. You set up the fences on where they're allowed in, in the software.
Will, will our hardware support the software and, and can we have multiple users and additional?
Yup, so this is all Google-based. It's all, they, they recommend Chrome as the browser to run it. So it's, it's very similar to, I, I know you guys probably haven't operated it, but the, uh, the cemetery database is all cloud-based. It's all on a website. So, um, any one of our employees who has a cell phone with a web browser can actually access this. Yeah, they said no, they said unlimited users on that.
Yeah, it's all internet.
And, and I like the cloud-based stuff better because then we don't have to upgrade servers and data storage and all that stuff.
And that was the nature of my question about where it was hosted. Uh, it's because if it's, if it's hosted on our own equipment, then that issue becomes really clear.
The only item that would need to be addressed, and probably the best time to bring it up, is if we're asking employees to utilize their phones to input data and access data, I think we need to come up with some kind of stipend for them to be doing that. But, um, you know, we're already asking that to them. That's our primary means of communication, at least for my guys, because they're not in an office, they're out in the field all the time. So that's our primary way, but I just want to put that plug in while we're on the so, on the subject. And I'm not opposed to that, but we have to budget for it. Yeah, absolutely. So it would be, they would, they would be understanding that, okay, I guess if you don't want to use your phone, you go back to the park, park around a public works until we get you a stipend. And manually put in, which is probably going to be more difficult for them. I don't know, going back to the office, AC running, sit inside, have a sandwich. Um, yes. And, and I do think that could be paid for out of the snow plowing line item. Because six months out of the year, they are on call. That, that phone is the primary means that we reach them. So I'm not asking for that money out of ARPA funded. And I'd like to do more research on it and just see what other towns are paying in, in comparable amounts. I just want to cover that while we're discussing this. Yeah, just to put it on your radar. Okay. So obviously, I would, you know, um, this is something I'm looking forward to, to look at today. Because I, I would want it to be listed as its, its own separate agenda item. So in case anyone wanted to come and specifically speak to it. But obviously, they have that estimate mapped out as the end of this month. I mean, this is.
Yeah, Friday.
Yeah.
It would, it would say twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, so, I mean, I wouldn't be looking to.
Which is not something to rush into since it's our.
Well, yeah, and, 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 and that's not to say that they wouldn't extend that courtesy to us, to extend that offer should we sign on to them. So, I mean, we realize that, you know, that they're running a business, they're at a, at Q, end of a quarter, or, you know, whatever, fiscal year. You know, they're trying to close some deals and I understand that. But I also don't think that it's, it's worth us rushing into it if we're not quite ready for it. Uh, and, you know, should we choose to go with them, they might very well, uh, say, we'll, we'll hold that offer for you.
So did you have a link in that part? Do we have, is the policy state we have the ability to waive it?
Uh, there's, it, it, I don't feel like it falls into one of those.
Yet the only items purchased under state or federal bid list, these are cases not required for bidding. Uh, only one known source of purchase and there is no comparable substitute product or service. Um, specific type or brand of supply or part necessary for acceptable operation of a machine or device, or as required by warranty or contract of a machine or device, written documentation supporting the purchase of a specific brand or part necessary, an item or service that is required on an emergency basis, and an item previously awarded within the past twelve months.
So the only one that might apply would be if it was on a state or federal bid list. Uh, do we know what this stuff is?
I do not believe they are, but I can double check. And, and really, my, my cau-, my caution for not following, you know, going on the RFP when it was head, when we should, or, you know, being judicious in the, the waiver process is that what I've seen happen to communities is that you get vendors that just like, well, listen, I, I know they would, uh, you know, they, they just find who they want, that's who they're getting at the bid anyway. So you end up having people not applying, not bidding on stuff. And that ends up, you know, hurting the community in the long run because you may not get the best deal because you've been alienating people.
Correct. A, a good source might choose to walk away.
So how many bids does it?
If you do it, if you do it in RFP, that doesn't matter. There's no minimum requirement bids that have to come in. It's just, it, when it falls under the twenty, what is it, one thou-, or was it one thousand?
Twenty-five thousand, one dollar.
Yeah, but the one to twenty, or is it a thousand to twenty-five thousand, you just have to, like, the department head has to get three bids.
A thousand and one to five thousand is department head.
Yup.
Approval. Five thousand and one to twenty-five is three quotes. And above twenty-five thousand and one dollars is RFP.
When you, when you put out an RFP, you can't control it. They could be the only one that bids on it. We could have ten people that.
RFP and sealed bids.
By, by, then it's still based, you know, I've never been a cheapest gets it guy. It's always the advice of the department head that's going to be using it to put the best case forward of what the appropriate.
Thing for you, but.
Yeah.
So as long as our purchasing policy doesn't mandate us to take the lowest bid, then we can do that.
Correct. So I'd say, I'd say based off of that is with the information that we have and the, I guess, the general idea that this would be an ARPA fund project, I'm really comfortable with public works director creating an RFP, creating an RFP and putting it out. Hi, Ian.
This, this does say, competitive sealed bidding shall make all purchases in excess of twenty-five K and contracts shall be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Responsible is italicized. I don't know what that, how that is defined.
That means everything's subjective. That, that's right. That gives you the leeway.
Right, so.
Like, like for instance, if there were some particular, uh, desired features of this, I mean, that could be justified under.
Yeah.
Or the quality of the work mission, the length of service, the industry, uh, technical skills available.
Cause I, I personally got bit by lowest bidder where we got a product that was cheaper, but.
Yup.
The vendor was in another state and when they came and installed it at, at our office, and it never, it still never went to this day.
Never saw them.
And we couldn't get them, so.
Okay.
You know, you can't take, you can't take into account those items such as proximity. Okay.
I see this as you looking down the road because I think we're kind of small to be doing this on one hand. But I also see this as a way with the future, where we should be doing it. And maybe we should start small now when our needs on as great, as great as they won't be in ten years' time. So when I look at the towns that they have already done it, they're a lot bigger than we have.
Well, I mean, like Alton, Barnstead, I think they're comparable towns. Barnstead's pretty close to the same size of it. But to your point, what I'm finding is a lot of what we operate off of is people's recollection. And that is, you know, as the queen says, recollections may vary. Um, it, it's, there are pieces of infrastructure that just kind of are forgotten about. And someone will call and say, I have a catch basin flooding in my yard. We don't have it on any of the GIS maps. Knowing when a road was paved to make certain, you know, maintenance decisions on it is very important. And if that's in the folder on a post-it note, pave twenty-thirteen, well, we don't know what kind of paving was done. Was it a shim and overlay? Was it milled? You know, just all of those things. I think for the price, what we get out of it will, the return on investment will be very large. Just because we're able to, there, there's just gonna be a lot of benefits to it that we're not getting right now. Yeah, I see a lot of from where, you know, for the initial input, but I, I, I think, I think there are some potential cost savings on some items down the road.
Phil, do you know, is your plan to input all of your existing data or how far back? And then that's quite a, quite a haul.
That can be a lot of work.
But that's a lot of work. Is that Lisa doing that? Part of your?
So anything we have with a GIS-based map, they will input for us. We just send that file. And so all the planning board documentation that's nobody, nobody's looked at twenty-three years, that's sitting on a disk or a floppy drive, who knows? But, um, all of that could feed into this.
That's part of the, okay.
Um, so.
But then all the sticky note stuff, that's the stuff that we as a town have to import.
I, I mean, we've got to pick a point to go back to, but, you, you know, like my guy who can only lift five pounds right now. Well, that's a pretty good job for him to be going through those files and finding that information and, and getting that, maybe not necessarily inputted, but segregating it. And, you know, we can get that inputted at a later date.
Phil, I, I'm assuming that other towns in the area are using this or something similar to it.
Yes.
Phil, I, I'm assuming that other towns in the area are using this or something similar to it, to database?
Yep. Um, and we have contacted, I believe she got ahold of two towns who have been using this. They, they were happy with it. We talked to the other, um, potential provider. Again, everybody's very happy with it, but I just don't think the price. That one for sure was meant for larger cities. This one, I think, is kind of tailored, not tailored, but able to handle the needs of the small municipality.
Is there anyone close by who's using this exact package?
Yes.
Well, Milford was one.
Yeah, Milford, uh, Alton, Oscepe, and I believe Barnstead was on there as well. I can't remember. Lisa was calling and getting.
Oh, can you on there too?
Yeah, the list he put up there was actually a couple of towns I hadn't seen previously, so, um.
Okay.
But yeah, I wanted to see where you guys were at, if this was worth even pursuing further or not, before we go too far down.
Question is, do, do we want Phil down to work on development?
Yeah, so I, I think, so we have, just in order to stay consistent with our purchasing policy, we're gonna have to draft an RFP and send that out, so at the very least, we're, you know, this, we're probably not looking at implementing this until at least the end of the month with us on the schedule, because we need to approve the RFP for release.
You mean next month?
Correct, yes, yes. Um, and then obviously approve the RFPs, submit it out, open the RFPs, and then make determination on them.
Okay.
And if we have to forego that twenty-five hundred bonus savings, that's the way it is.
But they're gonna be smart business people and not.
Give it to us.
We will see.
Exactly.
Phil, we'll, we'll, we'll see how good the negotiation goes.
Yeah.
All right.
I'll do my best.
All right.
Um, I did have one other thing, and I, I forgot to bring it up in my, um, moment in the soapbox. Would that be okay if I did now?
Yeah.
It's quite.
Old business.
So Lisa is, uh, taking some prerequisite training. The state is offering what's called the Certified Public Manager Program. Um, so the, she's involved in the course right now, the, the prerequisite course. And then the other course is, um, it's a twelve month program, and I'll just read this. The New Hampshire Certified Public Manager Program is a nationally accredited management development program intended specifically for managers in federal, state, and local government. Program's primary goal is to improve the performance of public sector managers and the organizational performance of state, local, and federal government. She was very interested in taking, you know, utilizing the education program that we had looked at doing before, but wasn't funded. This is twenty-two hundred dollars for the year-long program. She has applied for a scholarship from the Public Works Association. One of the fields in that scholarship application is that the governing body is aware that she's applying for it. So this serves as my notification that she will be applying for it. If there are, and it asks if there are shortfalls, could they be met? Yes, they can be met. As I've explained to the board, we are going to be going over on our training budget, but there, in the course of applying for that grant, she, or that scholarship, she found another scholarship, so we're looking at potentially having the entire thing covered. Um, and this is, rather than going out and getting an accounting class or, you know, some other college class, this is directly focused on municipal work and municipal management, so I think this would be a very valuable opportunity for her. And I have the information here, as you guys can look at if you'd like, but.
Who, who puts it on, Phil? Is it an HMA or?
Um, it's the Bureau of Education and Training through the state.
Oh, okay.
So yeah, so all the information's in here, but it's nothing I need you to sign. I just wanted to give the board a heads up that she's applying for grants to be in this. She's in the prerequisite course. That's already been taken care of, but.
Is it mostly online courses, or is it?
Uh, so there are, um, I think it's probably twenty-five or thirty percent of the classes is an in-person portion of it, but the rest of it is online. And it's a collaborative effort where, you know, just in the prerequisite courses, she's picked up a lot of great information from other state, and it's a lot of state, um, entities involved in it, but.
So for today, that's just notification unless that she's applying.
Correct, yep.
And the minutes were like that, and that covers you for the, your requests.
Yes, yeah. Uh, and, and again, we'll be able to find the money in the budget to cover that, but we are seeking out other funding opportunities through scholarships, so the intent is to not have to utilize any regulatory funds.
If I heard you correctly, part of the notification is that we agree to cover the cost if she can't find, right? Isn't that what you said?
Yes.
Oh, so that, that's.
So that's part, if we, we're agreeing that we will cover the shortfall.
But again, I'm not looking for ARPA money or anything like that. I will be able to find that money in our budget to cover the cost of it.
I guess, and I, I guess my concern is just our overall global issues.
Like. Yeah.
I think unless the town wants to keep looking outside for employees, it would serve us to take care of the ones we already have who have the potential to be promoted or fill other roles. And I think this is a very low cost option to do that versus a, I mean, this is the cost of a college class. I mean, I haven't priced one out lately, but.
Let's say she doesn't get the grant, the grants. Even, even when implementing money for that, she's budgeting, I know that's, that's on the draw, I'm going to be done, but for an education, for employees, she's not necessarily going to get that full amount. I mean, I just want to get that out clearly, because you're not going to be able to give one person most of the money or half the money that's available, is my guess, because you're going to have two cycles. I get the guessing, you're going to find those policies and procedures. I just want to get that out front and open it.
If we end up bearing the cost, what would, how much would that put your budget over for training?
For training?
Yeah.
Uh, I believe already.
Oh, you're already over.
With what we have signed up for, yes, but not, I didn't think it's like a hundred, two hundred dollars, but, um, the total cost is twenty-two ninety-five for the course, so.
And then you have mileage and a capstone project in here.
Correct.
Yeah.
But we have room in our mileage and meals allotment.
So you really just, we're just really thinking about the registration, which is twenty-two ninety-nine.
Correct. But I have it on good authority. She was the only applicant to the Public Works Scholarship, so.
I'd like to think Regina may give her a boost up too.
And I think her competencies as applied also will.
That is true. No question about, not denying any of that. It's all positive in her favor, no question.
Any idea when she'll know about the scholarship?
Uh, I think mid-July is when they're supposed to get back on that.
Right, because it starts in August, right?
Yes.
So by, I, I just want to make sure that we're clear. So just by notifying us, it said that we are agreeing to cover the remaining costs.
Yes, part of this notification is we have to agree before we apply.
Yeah. Just want to make sure we're clear on that. Yep.
I don't know what's everyone thinking.
Have you, have you read the descriptions? Like, I just, I haven't seen it, so I don't know what it is.
And, and this isn't, my, my concerns aren't that this isn't valid, this isn't important, this isn't appropriate, it's just the other issues that we're having, and the hits keep coming.
But that's my only hesitancy in this. You know, and, and at any other time, in a, in a, in a better fiscal situation, I mean, this would almost be a double brainer, especially for the benefit that will be gained, but I'd feel better if I knew the status of the scholarship.
I mean, again, this will not be, my overall budget will not be run over, or, I, I mean, I think.
Well, I suppose if you can find seventy-nine thousand, you can find an attitude, so. On that note, I'll say I'll go for it.
And I guess this is one of these things where, you know, the ARPA funding is the last to cover some of these other shortfalls, but ARPA funding can, I believe, legally cover some of them. I don't think this is applicable to this.
No.
Mm-hmm.
So.
You just put us in a tough spot.
Well, because what happened if another department head comes and says, we're short on training, we need to send our people, so.
Well, if they have the money in their budget, wouldn't you let them do it?
On any other year, yes. But like I said, like I said, stuff that isn't even necessarily tied to one department, we're going to be looking for cost savings that we return.
A lot more. I, I just, you know, I've had in doing the cemeteries, we're still billing the trustees for that work. So there is money coming out of that line item that is not being expensed on a contractor at the moment. So that is a potential pool of money that we could utilize for this.
She's been looking for additional training for us. This is not anything new on Lisa's behalf, so.
Just getting out of her time.
I just, I just hope no one else asks, because I feel really bad, because it's awful, given the financial condition.
No, and, and, and look, I would not be asking unless there was a direct benefit to the town. This is something where, you know, if you read through the the program of the course and everything, it's it's cheap compared to what you're getting in return.
Is it reasonable to ask you, you said the cemetery line item is one example, is it reasonable to ask you to show us where you would be at work? You could maybe offset the cost for this. Um, you said the mile, because the total cost is over three thousand dollars, right? So you said the mileage would be covered by?
Mileage and meals.
Right, so if you can show us where you can find this twenty-two, is that reasonable to ask? And then I, I think we could.
Is, is she gonna miss any deadlines if this gets to our next meeting, or you get that together?
Or we could, could we?
Or conditionally, as long as he provides that information to Susan.
Do it through Susan via, via email?
Yeah.
Right?
I feel, I feel comfortable with that, and I, and listen, I just I just want to put it out there. Somebody may come in with a similar situation, similar circumstances, and we may just have to say no. And stuff, I hate to say it, but stuff may not get evenly applied the further we get down the rabbit hole.
Well, they might not, and, and, and again, in a case like this, it might very well be weighing, you know, what's the benefit to the town, as opposed to the benefit to the individual themselves?
And I can see the benefit to the town in this, and that's why I, I'll support it.
I would also.
I'll need this in motion. So the motion, the motion would be to accept the notification of application to the course as described by the Public Works Director, outlining town's potential cost saving should it not be awarded. Can we get a second?
Oh, second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So you're accepting notification of application to the course, pending notification of where the funding would come.
With, 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 yes, with the understanding, with the understanding the town responsible, and this is all pending on the Public Works Director providing you documentation to send to us, showing that he can pull this from within his budget.
Okay, pulling this rabbit out of.
I don't have to dig deep.
He might, he might be a certified magician by the end of this cycle.
He's getting good at it.
Phil, I assume you want this back. Uh, if you guys wanted to look, then you can hold on to it. Or maybe Susan would like to have it to augment the minutes.
All right. Any other old business?
Um, I just have one other, well, because we never finished the committee stuff. I think I had one more thing, right? Um, so with the solid waste and recycling committee, so I'm working with Phil, we're looking at the contract to identify areas that need clarification. Uh, things like notice of, um, composition audits, and, you know, if, if they deem something is no longer recyclable, and they want to just trash it, what, is there a cost to us? Things like that. Um, so I talked to Susan to, um, about what we should send to the lawyer. So as soon as Phil and I kind of agree on this thing, we'll send it to the lawyer just for whether it's through Primax or, or Huddy, just as a once-over, and then we'll start the negotiation with Waste Management on. And, and there might be some small potential positive, you know, financial impacts, particularly if we do the collection point. And there's a whole thing in this contract about we, we're not supposed to do that. We're not supposed to pull stuff out of our.
Well, as long as we give it to them.
Yeah, as long as the collection point actually goes to them for the.
Right, so, you know, pulling stuff and getting it out of the blended value actually might, you know, be a positive effect, so that's what we're looking for. And that was it. That's all I have.
Okay.
A quick update on the P-FAS grant. New Hampshire D E S is currently drafting the contracts that will go to governor and council.
Okay.
And, uh, I've answered a few simple questions that they've had, like, who's going to sign it, what's the address of the town, blah, 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 so. We should be expecting to hear something fairly soon on that, and, and an anticipated G and C scheduling for that.
Okay. All right, new business. Uh, we did have the RFP in your packets, uh, to go out for the assessing for the five-year contract. It was just, anyone, if anyone had any questions before we send out that RFP? I didn't, I didn't find any thing that I had questions about, you know, just, we just need to keep budgeting notes, uh, when the difference in the annual contract years?
And this does not include utilities. We have a separate contract with San Suci now.
Okay.
So a five-year contract, so that's not even a question. I know it has been in the past through doing the utilities, but it was not in that contract.
When, uh, when's, what's the timeline of the utilities contract? Are they?
We just.
We just signed that one, so how many years was that?
Five.
Okay.
He does the same deal as, you know, taking them in batches as he goes through. Yep, I didn't see the final contract, but that's how he explained it.
Okay. Uh, then in the orange folder, there's a sand board head proposal for the ongoing site investigation support. So I think this falls under the contracts you will follow reviewing, the ones that were kind of mandated to do through the state D E S. Um, and it's more money we don't have, but we're pretty much obligated to abide by it.
Is there for our, uh, I'll put it back in my office, something analytical that we pay? Um, is there ninety-three hundred in there?
Ninety-two hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that was, that was the focus.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, uh, and then the budget estimate in basis of billings, is that's that budget of twenty-five to cover the scope of services. Has everyone, before we sign another contract, has everyone that this may affect had an opportunity to review it and give any input?
I haven't yet.
I think it would be before, I mean, so.
I did send it to, I was like.
Okay, yeah, so I, I don't remember seeing that separate in our document, but I'll be honest, I didn't read everything that he sent us.
I have a quote from Eastern Analytical for ninety-three hundred, that's why I.
When, when, when's the?
That's why I asked. Um, they held off till, they kind of sent it to me only a couple of weeks ago, but we missed the last meeting, so I said, well, if it can wait till the end of the month, we'll look at it at this meeting, so. I know they're looking for it, because it's got some stuff, stuff they already did.
Yeah, so we're, we're looking at it, and we're definitely looking at it this meeting. I would feel more comfortable having the finance director review it for any conflicts, and then.
Unapproval pending.
I can, I'd be comfortable if we did a motion for me to sign, uh, pending review by the finance director to make sure there's no additional conflicts that may come up.
Second.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, aye. Uh, we talked about, uh, Phil already talked about the, uh, perambulations, uh, so we're gonna have Susan draft up the appointment language for that. Uh, he already discussed driveway permits, the issues with that. Uh, we can open it up for public comment number two. Anyone? All right, I will close public comment number two.
I just want to clarify, so for the driveway permits, we talked about the fee schedule, so we need to.
So in, in, in general, we need to review, because if the, if the adopted fee schedule was not heard properly, we may, we, 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 we should take a look at it, see if there's any additional adjustments that need to be made, and then conduct the proper number of hearings, but in the interim, I don't think we can apply any of the, you know, in the interim, we can't apply any of the, any of the, any of the changes that are on that.
Tons of changes, and it's a very, you've looked at that schedule, right? It really should be redone. They talked about it for like a year and a half, and that's what we ended up with, but.
So, so.
It's not, it's not user-friendly.
No. Um, so who else, who else should, is gonna need to give input on that fee schedule if we need to?
Um, Kyle would be a good resource. Um, Tori?
Can, can you forward it to any of them and ask them if they can give any input on that prior to our next meeting?
Okay.
Uh, because with us being on this every other week's schedule, I think it's important, so anyone that needs to give input on that, can you just ask them to?
Having electrical.
Yeah, bring, bring us.
And do, uh, they have a.
And do, uh, they have a meeting Thursday, I'll let them know that you're looking at it.
But I'd like to, I'd like you to review it as well for, if we're doing, talking about formatting.
Yeah, and just, well, just if, if you can get the old one that was approved and so they're, so they know what they're looking at. Because just get, looking at it, I would be like, it's fine, but, you know, we have to revert back, so.
We're going back to the old fee schedule.
Well, and have them review side by side.
If the other one wasn't adopted properly, we have to.
We have to, right?
I'm going to double check that we didn't do what sounds like we did.
Well, I think, I, we just need you to confirm whether or not there was.
It was two or not.
Whether it was one or two hearings, because if there weren't enough, then we just notify everyone that we have to go by the old, that by the old means until we get this heard properly and any updated changes.
Which you could probably would schedule a second hearing, it really would have a timeline in there, so.
Right.
But it sounds like you want changes to.
You want changes to the driveway permit, you want it back by the twenty-five.
Well, yes.
So.
There's a discrepancy with postwork in the ordinance, so one of the.
Right. Okay.
Correct.
All right, all right, uh.
Boom, so. So it's an ordinance that says?
Does it?
We're going to have to go, we're going to have to go to town. We'll have to go to town, vote to change the ordinance.
Because we took them all out.
No, we took them, we took, took all the fees out of the ordinance. Correct.
But one of them must stop.
For exactly this reason.
Yeah.
Thank goodness.
Seriously, like it was.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that was a lot.
The driver award, it still had the B in there.
It does.
Yes.
It sh- it wasn't, it wasn't removed or supposed to have been.
Last coding?
Well, I, I don't, it was all that stuff.
It should have been, it should have been. If the legacy period is. Just because it's, just because it's on the website, doesn't mean it is.
I don't know.
Been updated since March.
That's my first order, it was here. Susan has the master, or Robin has the master copy of the ordinance is, so I would check that and not necessarily go by what's on the website. So the driveway ordinance might be, I know, I know.
Robin, Robin was updating them all to the website, I thought they were all done, but we'll just double check if that one.
I mean, if it was missed, that's a.
Yeah, then we act quick. All right.
But, yeah. Well, if, 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 if it was, if it was taken out and in the creation of the new docs, it just got missed, then it's an administrative thing.
Correct.
If it's more serious than that, it has to go back out to the voters, but.
Yeah, so that's what we need to verify first.
So, so Susan, um, thinking of other people who might want to look at the list, I mean, either Robin Carter or Glenn Greenwood.
Yes.
Because they had some input to this.
Yeah.
Should be able to catch them both today.
Yep, there you go, Glenn's going over here this afternoon, should be here soon.
Yep.
Doc, very soon. Adoption of minutes, I know Lori just had, Lori is asking that maybe we, we have to go into a quick non-public at the end anyway.
So we can talk about that.
So we could talk to something, an issue that you had with, 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 yeah, but we can do the public.
The public.
I will, I will have to do the public meeting, minutes.
June twelfth.
June twelfth, thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we'll just table those other ones. We may, yeah, if we come to a resolve, we may be able to approve them if we come out in non-public.
Yep.
Uh, so correspondence, uh, applications, purchase orders, so I'm going to start with.
What's it, is it for, is it a cell?
Yeah, there's one in there.
They, they tax selt, uh, it should be under the town, it was like five dollars or something.
They, they accidentally built selt, and it's actually the town on property, so, uh, if nobody has any issues with that one, uh, I already, so I already signed it in anticipation that there wouldn't be. Uh, we have application for facilities use. Uh, this is Kingston Rec, uh, contact Paul Butler, they're looking at the planes across from the town hall, a ukulele concert.
Whoa.
It was not my idea.
From four to six on Sunday, seven sixteen twenty-three, between the hours of three-thirty and six-thirty. No food or drink will be sold, people will bring blankets and launchers. So.
Susan, are you playing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nice, awesome.
We were the only ones they could come up with to. I'm trying to get other people to come and play. Is it, did he talk to you about it, Phil? That was my only concern about being on the planes. He, he said he did, but I didn't have any signatures on it, so.
Yes, it says, it says it was distributed to PD, EPW and fire, but we didn't get anything back from anyone on the.
I got this Friday afternoon, so.
Oh, okay, so.
They get a sign.
I got a call, I need a physical.
Oh, okay, don't, don't we need the, the sign up before we?
We, we do, we're supposed to have them just sign off on it, so, um, I mean, if we need, I, I take a motion to approve the application facility use pending the appropriate signatures by director of public works, chief police and the fire chief.
Yeah, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Absolutely. It's so, it's going to be great.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Terrence Bateman.
The other thing I had on facilities uses, I, I never got back the one for the heritage days, the museums event in August. It went out for, she had it, she brought it in, then she said, I'm going to bring it around to the departments, and then we had a discussion about it, whether you guys were okay with it or not, but I have not seen it come back. Do you happen to know where that is, or should I ask Leslie?
I have not seen the physical, not yet.
Okay, I'll talk to Leslie.
So it's probably residing either with police or fire.
Either that or Leslie's just still got it and she's bringing it around, I don't know, so.
Okay.
I'll ask, and I missed a chance to ask, uh, Jeff.
Uh, we have three employee pay increase forms in here, uh, my understanding of these were all planned for based off of certifications, they come from the fire chief. Uh, one would be an employee with the initials P C, uh, the new, previous rate of pay not applicable, new rate of pay would be seventeen dollars an hour. This is from going from full-time, uh, to a call-per-dia firefighter, so it was kind of a change in full-time status to on-call. Uh, the other one would be the initials N and M, uh, previous rate of pay was twelve fifty hourly, new rate of pay is going to be fifteen dollars hourly. And it looks like they obtained the certification, they re, uh, got their firefighter one certification. And there's another employee for the fire department, uh, initials R G, uh, previous rate of pay eleven dollars an hour going to thirteen fifty, uh, due to the completion of the firefighter one. So we could, if nobody has an issue with grouping these together, take a motion to approve, uh, these pay increases, uh, as outlined by the fire chief.
So moved.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have some purchase orders to be signed, uh, we have, uh, the fire chief has this one, this is coming out of, it is budgeted, uh, and it comes out of one of the emergency management lines. Uh, this one is for the laptop and it looks like the laptop is eleven hundred ninety-nine dollars. It is within the balance of their stuff, if anyone has.
Does it, does it say whether it was a scheduled replacement or not, uh, or is it because it was, there was a damage or?
It doesn't, but I asked if this was specifically planned for in the budget and he indicated yes.
Is that the fire group?
That's the, the E, the emergency operations center laptop. We have, this is also one of its planned replacement items, uh, this is an Apex six thousand portable radio. They're not cheap, five thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars. Uh, again, this is an emergency management line item fund that was planned for, uh, as part of the replacement process. Can I tell any issues?
No.
Uh, this one is three sets of turnout gear, uh, this is a different line item, and this is part of their replacement program for return turnout gear. Uh, whereas with, uh, yeah, that, this one's purchase of replacement turnout gear, so this is three sets of turnout gear, seven thousand two hundred and fifty-three fifty-nine. Uh, and the one thing you just didn't have, he didn't list out the, he didn't list out the balances, but he did say this was within the budget, so.
Uh, yes, um, he got an reduction of things in the budget for his replacements.
Okay.
I could update that, my.
Yeah, if you can just make sure that gets filled in. Any issues with this one for the turnout gear?
No.
Uh, so this is just the one that, this is the one I'm concerned about today, is just, this is for the, uh, maintenance and water filtration purchase order? Because are we, if we're contesting, if we're asking about the double.
Yeah, I just wanted to give it to you because those bills keep.
Okay, so I, I'd prefer we hold off on this until we clarify the billing issues.
Yes.
Here is, let's see, this is new gear for one of the new firefighters, uh, so full sets of gear, uh, for three of the firefighters.
I think those were the three that, right, we was talking about two.
Correct, uh, so that comes to a total of, it's got to be a big number, I'll use the carrier or credit. Looks like it was ten thousand one hundred eighty-seven twenty-two dollars, but it looks like we had some type of credit with this vendor, uh, for other, other equipment. So it's going to be a total of seven thousand two hundred and fifty-three fifty-nine, and this is budgeted and within the lines, so, okay. This is the tent lighting package, uh, this is coming through Kingston Days Lighting, so this is coming out of their budget, uh, looks like one thousand four hundred and twenty-two fifty. So this is lighting for all tents.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, and it was budgeted, it's coming out of their budget, so I'm assuming it's, I'm assuming it's part of their.
So with that, they have a twenty-five thousand dollar budget in their Kingston Days on, so they've spent, I think, seven hundred or so, so we have.
Yeah, yeah, I was going to say, I was going to say the current balance is like twenty-four.
Yeah. It's not like in our budget, but it's in the Kingston Days budget.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, sponsorship, we feel, we finish that, so.
And I, I know in the past, a lot of these meetings, people have just kind of gone through these, but I think with all of us being so new to this, like, I don't want us going through a lot of these.
Well, given the situation.
Yeah, yeah, give more around, uh, this is, uh, the T-shirts for the recreation department, these are the camp T-shirts. Uh, so they're camper and staff shirts, uh, it looks like it's about a hundred and fifteen, nine, hundred and fifty-nine shirts, so we're looking at one thousand nine hundred and eight dollars.
And that comes out of the recreation.
Yep. This is a new workstation for, uh, I believe it's Tammy's office, so it's Clark's office. It looks like new workstation, desktop and monitor, uh, one thousand one hundred and twenty-four. This is within her budget.
Paula, do you know if that's a replacement for an existing unit or?
I'm pretty sure it is.
I'm not sure.
Because we had one deployed leave and another one replaced at Davis.
The water techs one is at the back, so I did not sign that, I can go this way.
Oh, right, instead of just using the existing one, right?
Yeah, that's my question.
Right, right.
It could have been.
Uh, well, I don't know.
Right, right.
Did I, I didn't miss anything in the packets before we maybe go to non-public? Yeah, we just got that one, the one legal, we have the, we're going to need non-public for that legal response, uh, that we got from Hampshire Municipal Association, you know, services. And we're going to want, there needs to be some discussion about previous non-public minutes. So we are going to need a motion to go into non-public pursuant to ninety-one A, semi-colon three, Roman numeral two, and it is going to be letters I. And. How do we categorize, I'm going over previous non-public minutes?
I think you can do that just as part of your non-public.
It's a change include, to include.
Yeah.
Do A like the legal and two.
Or, yeah, I.
I think that can be a regular order of business in here.
Okay. So I'll take a roll call. Yeah, so, so moved, got a.
Second.
Second?
Yeah, yes.
Ellie, I'm a yes, yes.
Yes.